Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff of the city. As a citizen, I just want to say thank you for all the hours and the great job you do and the hard work to lead us. We are grateful for you, and I commend you on this beautiful renovation of City Hall. I've not been in here before tonight, but nice job. What a place to be proud of. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to gather again, to live out democracy, to live out our community life. I pray for these our leaders, that you might grant them wisdom, the ability to hear well, to think with their minds, and also with their hearts, out of love for our community. And I pray for all those who have gathered tonight and for this meeting, that as we come with a unified and a common desire for the good of our city, and yet with other ideas and possibly contradictory thoughts about how to achieve it, Lord, grant us all the ability to both hear and speak respectfully and with open minds, and allow us, oh, Lord, I pray, to find the best path forward. We pray for our city, that it might continue to be a great place to live. We are so thankful for this wonderful part of creation that we can share, and we pray for our country in difficult and challenging times, that God might bless America once again. I pray this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Amen. Eric Rooney, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I see his picture.
Mike on the phone? Hello, Mike? Mike Gibson?
He's muted.
He's muted. You can see, he's muted.
Can you unmute him?
He's unmuted.
President?
And Mike, oh, hey, Mike. Okay, we need a motion and a second and vote, so let Mike get into this meeting.
Do you have a motion?
Roll call, please, Debbie.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the mayor's welcome. You're all welcome. We have a nice group tonight. I've asked for your input, and sure, you're here to give it to me. If you haven't filled out a speaker's form, please fill one out for Debbie here, who's on the end. She's a recording clerk, city clerk, and she needs a notice spelling your names, so that we have it correct in the next minutes. Our special guest isn't here yet. He'll be here later, as Adam Botana, our state representative. This time, we'll open up the public comment. Anything except the zoning, which is 9A and 9B.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to first approve the agenda.
Oh, yes, sir. Approval of the agenda?
I have an amendment to offer to the agenda. Given the fact that we have a large public participation tonight and the interest in the Bamboo property, as well as important business concerning the millage rate and other items of the city manager agenda, I would make a motion to move item 14 and item 15 up to number nine on the agenda and 10 on the agenda.
No second on that motion? Motion fails. Number eight, public comment, please. Anybody to speak in the public on anything except the zoning 9A and 9B?
Yes, Alex Grant, former LPA member and former city councilman. Former LPA member and former city councilman. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got echo here.
Am I on?
Just one second. They're going to be clarifying it, but there's a little bit of echo, and it's going to make it hard for everyone to hear.
He's Kyle.
They're running.
He's working on it, okay.
Why don't you?
Sit down.
No, no, no. Sorry, still not ready.
Try again, Alex.
Okay. Ready?
Let's see if we can go. Let's go.
Which way?
I'm going to towards you, just see if I can move it a little bit towards you. Try it then.
Hello? Ready? Okay. That way? Okay. Yes, Alex Grant, former LPA member, former city councilman. Okay, I would like the city council to postpone any major decision on the 5.27 acres until we get a professional geologist to examine what is going on with the parent material below the soil horizons in the immediate vicinity of the Imperial River. I think we may have an underground river extending at least 50% of the south seawall embankment on this 5.27 acre parcel. And if that is the case, we should not build anything in that area. This explains why we had the flooding of the Imperial River during Irma and that the water was spawning for about a week after Irma left. And fortunately, during Irma, the eye of the storm had collapsed, so we didn't have any backward flow into the Gulf. However, we may not be that fortunate in the future, so we need to be careful there. Concern that I have is what happens, which happens generally if we have a major tropical depression dropping 10, 15 inches or so in the Benita Grande area, and that gets filled up with water in the river, and then we have a storm like Donna come in through the beachside and then come in and meet the other flooded water in the middle of the city, then we may have some major difficulties, especially when the, after the initial storm surge, the water goes back out, back from the river out into the Gulf. And the reason is, we have to look in physics for the possibility of remembering that force equals mass times acceleration. And since each gallon of water weighs about, what, 8.4 pounds per gallon, and if we have a million, anywhere between a million and 10 million gallons of water sitting in the river, and we have a backflow back to the Gulf at 35 or 40 miles per hour, we're talking about, oh, nearly 30 million, what is it? I calculated, actually, more than that, nearly 3 billion mass of water force going back to the Gulf of Mexico. And that would cause a very large problem for any residential units in a mixed-use project along the river. And the public safety is very important, as well as the possibility of liability to the city and its residents if we get sued for any major damage, knowing that we have problems that are associated with flooding and soils in that area. And that is my main concern for future generations here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Hello. For the record, my name is Barbara Ogle, and I live on Carnoustie Court. Tonight, I'm reading a statement from Bruce Galloway. The statement is from Bruce Galloway, a resident of Benita Springs, urban planner, development consultant, and residential builder with 50 years of experience thinking about how to use our land. Years ago, the cities of Benita Springs purchased a small property on two sides of the river to eliminate blight and create an opportunity for regrowth and improvement in an imagined downtown Benita. Over the many years since the purchase, while community leaders sometimes thought and probed for a new use for the small five-acre parcel, it sat alone as a green space, occasionally covered with parked cars or water, but more often as a peaceful spot for a walk among the trees and along the river. As we have watched, an anchor store and a large Texas shopping mall became a church, an abandoned rail line in New York became a hugely popular linear park, a warehouse in Louisville transformed into expensive residential condos, and last year, downtown offices emptied across the country, and we are waiting to see what happens next. Sometimes, in the midst of this constant change, community leaders have a chance to lock in a future that promises a more lasting result, a result that takes advantage of a rare undeveloped place in our urban environment and imagines it as a place of natural beauty and iconic features that attracts families, young people, locals, tourists, and shows how a town like Benita Springs can rise to the occasion and enhance the quality of life of its citizens by preserving special places and fitting them into the future. Tonight, please do not close the door on a very special and very rare opportunity to build a lasting legacy for our town. Please hit the pause button on solutions that don't think beyond one more mixed-use replica destined to become a mega-something when the narrow urban market hits bottom. Press the pause button, then create a broad and methodical approach to decision-making about this piece of green. We don't need an approach that rushes to judgment based on a meager number of submittals. Let's talk about this site with the Old 41 community, its residents, its businesses, and its visitors. Let's listen to non-business ideas as well as business ideas. Let's examine how using our land can help support surrounding uses and help knit a larger Old 41 area into a cohesive and exciting place. This is our land, our obligation, and our opportunity. Please don't waste it. My comments. Thankfully, previously developed, previous developments for the Imperial Crossing Bamboo Village property have failed. At this point in time, we have the rare opportunity to guide our future development of this unique property. If you have not had the opportunity to watch Untold Stories of Benita Springs on YouTube, please take the time to view it, as it highlights the importance of the Imperial River to the history and the future of our city. We are not asking for a passive park. We see a vision of an area that will create experiences for residents and visitors. Why not ask the residents what they want on public-owned property? Having public comment after granting developer's request is like closing the barn door after the horses are out. We need to focus on water quality as well as the future of our downtown. We do not need to turn it over to a developer. We have seen what can happen when a developer takes control. Just look at the Mosaic apartment complex. It didn't quite turn out the way it was presented. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Are there any extra seats? I'm sure there's some extra seats sitting around here. We've got some people standing. Come forward. There's a couple of seats up here, sir. Ma'am. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Go ahead. Name, please.
My name is Jim Stoke. I live on Carnoustie Court, and I'm here to read a statement from a friend who had a schedule conflict. Her name is Linda Schwartz, and she lives in Cedar Creek. To the Benita Springs mayor, city councilors, and city staff, I'm writing regarding item 14A on the 7/21 council agenda green sheet number 2107155. I oppose development of the Bamboo Village property in any form other than that proposed by Charlie Strater. Residential development should not be considered because this property is in a flood plain. We may well remember what this area looked like after Hurricane Irma, and those who were here for earlier storms such as Donna in 1960 say that the flooding then was even worse than with Irma. Rather than building in flood-prone areas on the banks of the Imperial River, the city should strongly encourage and incentivize planned retreat from both coastal and inland flood-prone areas. The downtown area does not need more apartments. The recently sold Mosaic complex, consisting of 273 residential units plus retail space, is more than sufficient rental space. Please do not consider the proposals of Nash and BCC. Their proposed uses are not compatible with the city's comprehensive plan, and again, they propose residential development in a flood plain. Why should the city continue to pay commissions and fees to developers such as Trask, as they will likely come up with proposals similar to those we already have? I encourage the city to use Bamboo Village area as a public park with space for event parking and perhaps some retail space that would cause limited environmental damage should it be flooded during the next hurricane or prolonged storm that caused ground saturation and inland sheet flow flooding. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam Botana. There's a seat up front here for you, Adam. Adam? 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 Here, Adam, there's a seat up front. Would everybody mind if I interrupt this process? This gentleman just came in as our newly-elected state representative. He's a little late, and his name is Adam Botana, and I'd like to applaud him for... If he could come to the microphone, we'll interrupt this. I'm going to interrupt this a little bit.
We'll wait.
And he's not, he's going to be very short because he's late. Thank you, Adam.
First of all, thank you, Mayor Steinmeier and council members. I apologize for being late. Boat rentals and high and low tides don't really work out that well in Benita Springs, so I'm sorry about that. Folks, I'll be brief here. I just want to say thank you for having me. I appreciate it. And just give you a quick report from Tallahassee. We, it's been a good year. Unfortunately, we're working with, the governor unfortunately did veto our buyback program, but we are working with Senator Pastor Domo to get that done, and I appreciate it. And I just want to let you know that I'm, guys, I'm here, and I'm excited to see what you guys have coming up for downtown Benita. It's a nice thing to see whatever you guys do decide, but we look forward to supporting you. All right? So I'll get back to you. Sorry to interrupt, but I'm going to stick around and listen to what everybody has to say.
City council, have any questions for Adam while he's here? Seeing none, you're excused. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we're back to normal. Thank you, dear.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Esman, and I'm reading this on behalf of a gentleman by the name of Bill Douglas, who is out of town. Dear mayor and esteemed council members, my name is Bill Douglas, and while I have affiliations with the Wonder Gardens Downtown Business Alliance and the Benita Citizens Group, I am writing you simply as a concerned citizen of Benita Springs, where I have lived since 1998. As such, I am aware of most of the communications that have been going back and forth concerning the future of the Bamboo Village slash Imperial Crossings. In this regard, I was particularly impressed that you, our council members, who half are not listening to me, took the time to conduct a workshop on this subject where a list of haves, have-nots was developed, and then submitted to the four developers who have shown an interest in the BVP. Thus, you can imagine my total surprise that one of the leading developers, Baron Collier, appears to have paid little attention to the council's suggestions and continues to push for the concrete jungle, which was the centerpiece of their original proposal. Thus, their plan, which continues to severely limit public use of this property, seems to be a nonstarter, based upon council input and the public comment I have heard to date. Another significant concern from my point of view is what is the rush to get this project wrapped up during the next month or so? At present, as usual, a large number of our citizens, like myself, are away from Benita for the summer, which limits our ability to make our thoughts known to you, our decision-makers. Therefore, I urge you to vote to put a three-month hold on a BVP decision in order to give everyone involved further time to consider the long-term impact of implementing any of the four proposals that have been submitted to make downtown Benita forever. Sincerely, Bill Douglas.
Thank you very much.
Take one and pass them down. Good evening. Mayor and council member? For the record, Dwight Esman, Paradise Road area. The mayor said he wants Benita Springs to have the best park system in all of Florida, and I agree.
Did I say? Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
The mayor has said he wants Benita Springs to have the best park system in all of Florida.
That's right.
And I agree. So that means we should keep most of the Bamboo Village property, the BVP, for public use. My original suggestion was for a hotel on one side with a rooftop bar and a restaurant with some fun things to do on the other side. That's similar to what Shay Trask has proposed. But some people have convinced me that you cannot go wrong by keeping all the land for public use. Commercial ventures can and do fail, but let them do that on private property, not on land we own. We all know the current demand for residential units is not sustainable. If demand for apartments drop and rents fall, will the developer insist they have to sell those as condos? Once they're built, even if it's a land lease, do you think a new council could prevent that? Do you really think you have more control with a long-term lease? I'm not against the lease option, but none of us will be alive to reclaim that land at the end of the lease. Do you think you can evict a developer after they spent millions of dollars because they insist that we must make changes in order to stay in business? Other people have said, back in 2007, we could have ended up with a bunch of empty concrete buildings on that property, and if you look at what happened in Newport Ritchie with a project that is very similar to this, you'll be very afraid. If the commercial development is a dismal failure, voters won't remember how you voted a few years from now, but you will remember. And 10 years from now, if you're asked, what are you most proud of and what you did on this council, I hope you say it was your vote on this issue, because it can be your legacy. For 18 years, everyone, including me, just assumed that the BVP would be a mixed-use development of residential and commercial with a little bit of river access for the public. And of course, public, the public can use the restaurants and stores. But isn't there plenty of land downtown for that? We'll never have riverfront property downtown again. Neither Charlie Strater nor Shay Trask is saying the public land should just be green space. They want to create something on that property that will bring people downtown. Baron Collier is a fine company with a great reputation and a long history in southwest Florida. I'm sure they believe that what they are proposing is the best option, but I and many others don't. Their design might be fine for Astero Naples, but it does not look like Benita Springs, at least to me. And it is subject to a great deal of risk if the economy changes, and this past year has shown us how quickly the economy can change. So you should not give anyone the exclusive right to deal with you for any length of time, because at the end of that time, you may still not have a project you all like and that's ready to move forward. This council ought to be united on this decision because it's too big a decision for a divided vote. A better option is to give two or three proposals 90 days to come back to you with more details about their plans. There are a lot of voters not in town, I'm echoing Bill, who are not in town right now. They are not snowbirds. They live here, they pay taxes. Three months, most of them will be back. It's the only sensible and right thing to do. We've waited 18 years. We don't get a second chance to do this right? No one can answer, what's the rush? And I want to say I'm extremely disappointed this council voted not to move this agenda item forward so that the public did not have to wait around for hours to hear your discussion on this important issue. I hope you will give every presenter 90 days to come back to council with more details. But after comments, I'm going home, but I'll be watching.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, and thank you, everyone, for your attention. My name is Sandy Gibbons. I live in Village Buck, and I have been a Benita resident for over 16 years. Because of the potential impact on the Old 41 corridor, I believe that tonight's vote on the Bamboo Village Imperial Crossing is one of the most significant votes in our city's history. Perhaps the most significant was the decision to purchase this property back in 2003. That council was committed to ending the downtown blight and setting the Old 41 corridor on a course to become a place to attract tourists and for all citizens to enjoy. Public funds were used for the purchase, and that council's decision certainly has been a benefit to the city. Next, a different city council embarked on the Old 41 Road and Landscaping Project. That proved to be more difficult and more costly than originally thought, but once again, public monies came to the rescue. The project was completed, and again, the city benefited. Looking back today, in fact, I can hardly remember what Old 41 looked like when I came in 2005, and that's not a bad thing. Next, a different city council made the decision to rescue the Wonder Gardens, Benita's signature attraction. Attendance has been steadily increasing, the gardens are thriving, and once again, public money was used, then private money followed, and the council's decision proved to be a good thing for the city of Benita Springs. Each of these previous city councils used public funds in the best possible way to benefit the people of Benita Springs. I'm asking this council to continue the work of your predecessors. Public funds, money from Benita citizens, were used to buy the Bamboo Village property. Since the public provided the money for the purchase, the public should have an opportunity to be heard. Their opinions considered and the land we paid for should be used for public enjoyment. In addition, holding these meetings in late July, when many of our residents are out of town, does not give the appearance of responsive or transparent government. I do not believe that selling or leasing to a developer will benefit all the citizens of Benita. A place where families can visit, learning can take place, community gatherings can be held, and experiences can be shared, that's what will benefit all Benita citizens whose tax money bought this property in the first place. Please, give us an opportunity to be heard. Hit the pause button.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to have to ask you not to applaud, because it influences the other people that may not agree with your applause. So please hold your applause. Thank you. Yes?
Good evening, council. Mayor, my name is Zonos Grekos, 8890 Taurine Court. I've been in the Benita area since 1996, have driven by that property obviously innumerable times. Can you hear me okay, mayor? You're cupping. Is it me not speaking loud enough, or is it the mic that starts?
It's the mic.
It's the mic. Is somebody in charge of the mic?
I can hear.
I can hear.
You all can hear?
We can.
You can't? Okay, well, the public can't hear. Is that better?
Yeah, we got it.
Well, I saw the mayor cup in his ears, so...
I have the worst hearing.
I don't think your hearing is equivalent over there.
He does it all the time.
Does both. All right. So Zonos Grekos, Benita Springs, 8890 Taurine Court. Know the property, obviously, and it, been involved with city planning on and off, development business. It, looking at this from a perspective where I've taken a step back, I think that we, as a city and as individuals, are better than what we're discussing today with proposals from developers. We've got an entire park system that could become the gem of southwest Florida, as the mayor has alluded to, and we're looking at this as an individual parcel potentially as to what the developers are doing, rather than an entire... We've got an entire park system that could become the gem of southwest Florida, as the mayor has alluded to. And we're looking at this as an individual parcel potentially, as to what the developers are doing, rather than an entire park master plan that I think, I personally think and others have said, ought to be incorporated into the thinking of city council and into the development of this parcel. I don't know that any of us are green space experts, that we have a ton of experience in doing this in this type of setting. And what I encourage council to do is, as has been said before, hit pause. Let's maybe ask an independent expert that does parks all the time in cities, knows how to raise revenue, looks at the businesses around it, and have an independent council with expertise give us the recommendation as to what ought to be done with that parcel. In 2021, not the one that we had years ago that proved to be out of context for what we are looking at currently. There's a lot of experience out there, there's, this has been done in other small to midtown areas where it's really revitalized the downtown, and it's been done in a way where everybody kind of gets what they need and the city really benefits long-term. So all I'm asking is, please put a hold on it. Let's take a deep breath, because you've got a lot of anxious people sitting on both sides of this podium, and let's breathe. There's no rush, nobody's got a gun to our heads, the parcel's gonna be there tomorrow, it's gonna be there in two weeks, it'll be there in three months. Developers will not disappear, they'll be willing to develop even when that time comes. Let's look at this independently, objectively, and look into someone with experience that's done it before and can really tie in all the parks, so that you have some type of interconnection where it becomes an entire communicating network of parks. We've got some beautiful areas down there that a lot of people don't even know exist because they gotta go over railroad tracks, or there's a bridge that they don't know what leads to. If this was done in an organized, comprehensive fashion, I think we'd be able to get a lot more out of this asset than what we're discussing right now, tonight, with these proposals. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Please, no applause, you're inhibiting the other people. Not everybody agrees with you. Go ahead, John.
Hello, Mayor, council. For the record, my name is John Pano. I'm a Benita Springs resident and local business owner. It's really nice to see this many people show up to a council meeting and be involved in what's going on in the city. I like to say I see it all the time, but sadly, we don't get this much involvement. Maybe we need to sell more property controversially or something to keep people in here. But I just want to speak about a couple of things, and one is, there's a lot of talk and confusion about parks and activated space. An activated space is public space that is, has use, has things that people can do in it, draws people, has attractions, and quite frankly, can draw hundreds of thousands of people to it, such like Manatee Park is a perfect example. During a three-month period, that draws two hundred thousand people, and it generates a lot of money for Fort Myers. I suggest we have three really basic things down there. We have great history, we have wildlife, and the Wonder Gardens, and we have the beautiful Imperial River and the Manatee on the River. And those things, right now, attract close to a hundred thousand people a year. It seems to me good business would dictate that we invest in those things and bring more people down and activate more space. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
My name is Eddie Burke, and I am a resident of Benita Springs. I live in Spanish Wells. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Noah Properties. Nobody could be here, so they've asked me to read a letter on their behalf for Bamboo Village. Dear Mr. Rooney, this is a follow-up to our most recent response to you regarding today's city council meeting. We appreciate your acknowledgement that Noah Properties LLC's proposal is still being considered for the Imperial Crossing development opportunity. As stated in Mr. Ebolini's letters dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, we are still interested in pursuing the project and collaborating with the city. Our proposal remains one that will include ample public green space and the associated commercial uses that would support the public areas and enhance its appeal to residents and visitors of all ages. Our proposal also includes an area for residential uses at a reduced density but sufficient to support the commercial uses, as well as support existing and future businesses in the downtown area. While we remain willing to engage in a more thorough and detailed plan, our request remains for more direction from the city council, perhaps a delineation of use areas for the property in a maximum number of residential uses, with the residential project being a fee-simple acquisition, with the city retaining fee interest in the public space. We envision including opportunities for public to have access to the river, including kayak and paddleboard rentals. We appreciate your consideration of Noah Properties and look forward to forging a partnership with the city for future of Imperial Crossings' property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Would you introduce yourself?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, city council members, Mr. Representative, and audience, my name is Joseph Colfield, and I'm a resident of Naples, Florida. My address is seven nine zero one oh seventh Avenue North, Naples, Florida. And you wonder, why in the world is this guy in Benita? Well, I have lived in southwest Florida for nearly twenty-five years, and out of those years, twenty-two of those years, I've been cleaning up Old Forty-One every year for those twenty-two years, every Saturday of each month, in support of our Christmas Victor Lutheran Church. And I come before you today just to say that I am proud of Benita Springs, and I want to offer my support to your new mayor, because I know for sure he loves Benita Springs, that I know for sure. And by the way, I was at your library today, and that's one of the best libraries that I have seen. And it just goes to show, I just wanted to encourage you all, for the citizens, to continue making those great decisions for your city, because you have been known to make those great decisions, and because those decisions that you have taken together have made this city one of the best in southwest Florida. And I just wanted to say that I am just proud of the Mr. Mayor and all the council members, and I just wanted to come here to say that tonight, because it makes me proud every time I pass by here and see this little city, that I used to say, I cleaned up that city for twenty-two years. So thank you for allowing me to come tonight to share with you my great love for Benita.
Thank you, John. There's an officer back there, I'll need him. Go ahead.
Okay, Mayor and city council, my name is Suzanne Masters. I've been a resident here since ninety-nine. I live in one of those gated communities, and the best part of Benita Springs is Old Benita to me. All these years, my grandchildren are crackers, and they live in Astero now, but every year, we come to all the events in the park, and we walk across to the other island park, and we do all this July Fourth and all the things. My grandchildren have grown up, and they love Benita Springs. And I just hate to see it change, because Benita Springs is a family city. It's a family city, and we need to keep it that way. I know somebody else's children grew up here. And that's all I have to say, is please keep Benita beautiful. We don't need more stuff in Old Benita. Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
You're welcome, dear.
You expect me to listen, and you don't listen to me. Next, please.
Guess I need my glasses. Mayor and council members, for the record, I'm Shelley Anderson. I have lived in Old Benita for forty-four years. My three children were born and raised here. Much has changed over those years, but I have always loved Benita Springs and my location close to Old Forty-One. My children could walk to the middle school, the library, Riverside Park, the rec center, et cetera. They grew up going to the Wonder Gardens. We saw many iterations of Shangri-La Springs and saw it sit closed for many years. All these years later, Shangri-La is open and thriving. Riverside Park has events almost every weekend during season. We have new businesses such as Downtown Coffee and Wine, Circle C Farm Store, Chartreuse Craft Cocktail Bar, and others soon to open. The Wonder Gardens continues to break attendance records. Survey Cafe has become a well-known favorite. The new library is truly exceptional. The beautification of Old Forty-One makes it a pleasure to walk to all of these places and more. One thing all these places have in common is that they are all unique and locally owned. We have no chain stores or chain restaurants, except I think the Dollar Store north of Terry Street. Downtown Benita Springs is charming and quaint and is starting to blossom in so many ways. Now we have a big decision before us, what to do with the old bamboo property. I don't think it is too strong to say that it would be a travesty to put Cookie Cutter Residential and Retail there. We have plenty of residential property in Benita, and we can't fill the retail commercial spaces that we have. This is a beautiful piece of property in the middle of town that straddles the river. We have a perfect, unique opportunity to create something really special that will draw people to Benita from all over. We know that is true if we just look at how successful an attraction the Wonder Gardens has become. Why the rush? Aren't you, as our council members, tasked with representing the interest of your constituents? To my knowledge, there have been no town hall meetings to ask what we citizens think or want. I know that you all care about Benita Springs, or you wouldn't be serving the community as you are. I appreciate your service. I also believe that there are many citizens of Benita Springs who have lived here for many years longer than all or most of you, and they need and want to be heard. This is our hometown, not a place we retired to. I'm not being critical of anyone retiring here, I just believe that locals have a different perspective that needs to be heard and included in these decisions. This land is our land and should stay that way for all residents and visitors to enjoy. There are other locations that would be more appropriate for residential and commercial, specifically the property that Tony Mansillo is going to develop, as well as the Latitude property, or Longitude, whatever it is. The BVP is better suited to have attractions and activities for those residents and others to enjoy. I urge you not to be hasty in this momentous and important decision that is before you. The result will be something that will exist for many years to come. What do you want your legacy to be? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please, Charlie.
Mayor of council, I'm being advised to go ahead as a presenter and make my comments now. So regarding the Imperial Crossings' property, I hope you found my proposal for public use as a gathering place that addresses your have-and-have-nots, both informative and inspirational. I'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns later. Some of us have seen Benita grow from a quaint old Florida town into a bustling city with cars, commercial housing. By looking back, it helps us look forward. Imagine how busy the city will be in twenty, thirty, fifty years from now. By then, having riverfront public land downtown will be even more important. We have seen how much people already enjoy our downtown parks. A public gathering place with more attractions would enhance that. We know how important having clean water is to our environment and therefore our economy. That is why we used to try to keep high-density development off of the riverfront. The north parcel basically has no stormwater system, other than that water runs downhill. I hope you will take care of the river and the creek as your first priorities. The river deserves our respect and should not be relegated to be in a canyon between a, excuse me, and should not be regulated, rug, sorry, it's been a long day, been in attic most of the day. Relent, shoot.
We got you, we got you.
You got me, thank you, thank you. From being a canal between a canyon of concrete. It's amazing what heat'll do to a person. In the future, when people Google things to do in Benita Springs, hopefully they will see an interesting Imperial Crossing public space, and ubiquitous mixed-use development will not be listed as an attraction. This is other, excuse me, there is other land downtown for private developers. The taxpayers should not have to subsidize them on public lands. If using tax dollars, why not invest in our city's future, not a private developer's profits? You would be Florida pioneers with the groundbreaking move if you choose to transfer public land for private development in a growing city. You would make history on that one. There is no need to rush on something that will affect downtown for decades. It has been about eighteen years since clearing the property. Taking some more months to secure funding for public use to start improvements will go quickly. There are consultants who specialize in public use for redevelopment purposes, including assisting cities with funding. The bottom line, other cities less affluent than us finance and build great public spaces with grants, public and private funding, we can too. Thank you for caring about the wants and needs of our residents.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, Mr. Hasty.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Colum Hasty, and I live in Benita, of course. I was on the original LPA, and this issue is so important. The Imperial River is the once and future treasure of Benita, and the eastern portion of the river is in fantastic condition. It's in beautiful shape, full of wildlife, clean, flowing fast, natural riverbanks, a lot of unusual, some endangered species foliage out there, and it connects to the piece of property we're speaking about today. The two actually could connect better than they do right now if we finish the, there's a beautiful river trail out there. What's it, what's it, oh, that's right, it's Colum's Trail. And that trail, we surveyed all the way to Dean Street on a piece of property that used to be called the Goat House, I think it was, and that trail was intended to go all the way to Dean Street. It got stopped at I-75 for various reasons, and I think those issues have been overcome. But the fact that you could walk Colum's Trail all the way to the Bamboo Village property is fantastic. It's not that long a walk, and it does go all the way if we just hop from the, from the, where it hits Dean Street, and then across a couple of little streets, and there's a public sidewalk all the way to the center of town. It'd be a fantastic connection. And that trail in my neighborhood behind my house out there is really, really widely and greatly appreciated. And this would just, the two would just magnify each other. And I'd love to see this property remain public, or at least I'd look forward to participating in numerous workshops that we have plenty of time to do, so have at it.
Thank you, Colum. Add on to Colum, there's a trail named Colum Hasty's Trail, which he put together years ago that follows the Imperial River from where, yeah.
From a danger place.
Goes all the way down, and it's a beautiful walk, and it's maintained by the city, and if you want to take a stroll and see old Florida, there you go. Yes, sir. Mr. Tony?
I'm Tony, Tony Mansillo. Nice to be here with you all again. My opinion's a little different, of course, and that's why I'm here, to express another opinion. I also believe in keeping the river public, keeping the areas adjoining the river, to some extent, public. And I don't think ever, the good use of public and private land has ever been a problem. It's always been a benefit to the city. I'd like to ask you to look at what was done in... I'd like to ask you to look at what was done in Providence, Rhode Island. And that was also a Duane project. And when they moved the rivers, and everybody said that the city should keep the train station, which was on the edge of the river, and the city should keep this, and the city should keep that, but they didn't. They developed it. And they developed it as a combination of public and private lands. That river is now used by everybody. I mean, they have weddings on the river with rafts, and they have river fires. I don't know if you've ever looked it up on the internet. It's a great example of public and private use. I was part of that project, and that's why I bring it up. You have a very fine developer who has done nothing but wonderful projects so far in southwest Florida, who's interested in it. We're continuing to go forward with ours. In fact, this week, we are signing a letter of intent with the Wonder Gardens. They want to buy one of our parcels. And we think it's a good thing because it'll get them national recognition to have the amount of space they'll have. But on the other hand, we've bought the land... We bought the apartment building across from Maria's. And what we plan on doing there is coming in... It's in design now. Coming in with a sixty-unit hotel, which will operate with the Wonder Gardens to do ecological tourism, which I think downtown Benita is perfect for ecological tourism. I worked on this before. I worked on Addie Valise with the Grooby family that owns Johnson and Wales. Great... Ecological projects are the best thing for an area like this because it's like you've got a hotbed of ecology all the way around you. This is a wonderful place for people to come to, to teach their children about the wildlife, the waterways. It's just a marvelous place. I don't think it should be all developed. I don't think the whole ten acres over there should be developed. I think it should be a combination, public and private. I think, like on my project, I built around the edges my plans. And in the middle is a park, which we're going to give the city a right-of-way over. And by doing that, we can apply for grants because then we become an open perimilation development. And that would be wonderful for Benita as well. In fact, I've cut one building. I cut a ten-foot swatch right through the building, where people from the street could walk through it. I would suggest the same things over there. But if you read the Duane report, which you people paid a lot of money for, they couldn't have been more clear about the fact that the continuity of the commercial part of the street should stay, and that should all be commercial on that side. Now, the backside, that's another thing. The backside, I'd like to see them do something like we did. We've got a designed fountain in there. We've got benches for people to sit on who are walking through. Our back part of our project, the center of our project, is strictly open space, so to speak. And then across the street, where we have two more buildings going up, we have a piece on the waterway, and we're putting a paddleboat launch, which a local person who's in that business is going to maintain and operate, so that everybody can use the paddle, not just the people who are there. I do not believe in closed developments. Every development I've ever done is an open development. From when I was thirty-six years old, the first real development I did was always open development. I believe in open space, and I believe that we have to have places for everyone. Everyone. The people who want to shop there, the people who want to eat there, the people who want to go there, the people who want to entertain there. I got to tell you, you guys have got a great asset. It shouldn't be misused, and I think you should go back and read the report you paid thousands for. That was such a good report they did. I mean, and by the way, the girl who did that report, who was the center of that report, I worked with her on the moving of the rivers in downtown Providence. So I know... And she was a student coming out, going into work for Duane at that time. She's a brilliant girl, and she did a brilliant job over there. If you just put that away and don't use any part of it, you're wasting an asset that you paid a lot of money for. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. I'm going to help Tony try to help you solve...
Name, name, name?
Hello?
Name?
Hello? I can hear you, okay. All right, for the record, my name is Don Thompson, and I live on Kent Road. I live on Kent Road. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm going to try to help Tony to help solve your applause problem. I've been a full-time resident here in Benita Springs now for fifty years. I'm here for myself and my wife, who apologizes she couldn't make it. She was born here. It's not often that I find myself disagreeing with my neighbors and friends, but sometimes you've got to respectfully agree to disagree and do what you think and know is right. My message in request to the council on the Bamboo Village project is stay the course. Stay the course that you've been following for the last fifteen or twenty years. Back in nineteen seventy-two, I used to catch a bus on Old Forty-One to get to school in Fort Myers. And back then, Old Forty-One was a two-lane road. It was the only north-south arterial here in Benita Springs. And believe it or not, it was a thriving roadway for that era. Wouldn't be looked at that way for now, but it was then. In nineteen seventy-six, New Forty-One was built and opened. And of course, it took unbelievably the wind out of the sails of Old Forty-One. And I'm not going to get into all the things that happened out there. I think everybody mostly knows that. But we also know that the business owners and residents have been trying to bring it back to life ever since. And guess what? It's starting to work. Fortunately, your predecessors on council, some fifteen-plus years ago, came up with a plan, not just for Bamboo, but for Old Forty-One also. And thus far, council members in between you and your staff has followed that plan. And in fact, you all have required a lot of developers and folks that are doing things down there in Old Forty-One to follow that plan. There's been a lot of time and effort expended. You adopted the form-based code, which helps people know what's expected of them and what's permitted. And probably most importantly, tens of millions of dollars have been spent on that road to rejuvenate it. And guess what? That's what the redevelopment, including Bamboo Village, is planned to pay for. I would also suggest that many property and business owners have relied on that plan that we've been following for the last fifteen-plus years. People have purchased property, they've purchased businesses, they're starting up new businesses, and a lot of folks have stuck and are sticking their necks way out in reliance upon the plan that this city selected. And I know that more will do so if you stick with the plan. I suggest that it's fair to say that a lot of business and property owners that have purchased more recently have not been sticking their necks out based upon adding a park at the most developable location, end destination spot in the entire Old Forty-One area, in a place that's already practically surrounded by parks. We do have a ton of parks out there, and they're great. And I'd like to see everybody do some better things for the parks that we have there. Parks are great and absolutely needed, and we need to continue to plan and build. I urge you to choose one of these developers. That's your job with the mixed-use plan. I think that's what's really needed there. We can still have some maybe linear parks along the river, but please, stay the course. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Who's this guy?
Good evening. How are you? Nice to be here. Peter Simmons for the record. And Don, I really appreciate that historical perspective. You have been here as long as just about anybody in the room, but that's not to upset anybody else that's been here for a number of years. But I know you know the history down there. You've mentioned about previous city councils. I was certainly proud to be part of some of those councils to keep moving Old Forty-One in the right direction. Twenty years ago, we don't want to think about what was going on at our park down there, right? Our beloved... Before my time, right? I wasn't here, but we, the those that were, remember how that was. I would say to Don, or I would echo what Don said quite simply, stay the course. When you look at the Collier proposal, a group that's been here, obviously, for over a hundred years, that's proud to partner with the city of Benita Springs, that's proud to include the parks and the green space that we're all talking about, incorporate both into one package with the backbone, the foundation, and quite frankly, the fortitude to do this for a lot less than they would do a lot of other places. They want this project. They have stability, and they will include a lot of green space. And Don, like you said, listen, with water and blue-green algae, listen, I think everybody in this room is on the same page. But I think we're having... Maybe we just need to shift the discussion slightly on the green space. We have a lot down there, and we're going to get a lot more with this project and this partnership. And we're going to, quite frankly, put the finishing touches on a project that has been in the works for twenty years. I remember when I sat in the District Four seat. We partnered with Lee County. We put up several million dollars, and the county, and it was about twenty million dollars in total, to quite frankly, dig up Old Forty-One and reroute it, replumb it, get it... You know, get it for water hookups and electric hookups, and quite frankly, get it ready for business and get it ready for this time. So I know it's a decision that you've discussed and thought about for a long time, but I would just encourage you to stay the course. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Excuse me, how many more people we got here to speak? You put your hands up on this subject? One more?
Last one, okay.
What? Okay, yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Rick Kennedy, and I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time and talk about parks versus development. I consider myself a park person. I'm big on Rails-to-trails. I'm big on greenways. I spend most of my weekends in some parks somewhere around the state. And the other side of the coin is, I was a builder on Sanibel for forty years. And this is the first time I've been in a podium again for a period of time. And if they boo me at the end, that'd be fine, because that's what I was sort of used to. But you're not the only Depot Park. Depot Park in Gainesville is a fantastic park. It's a combination of private enterprise and the city of Gainesville. We're not Gainesville, but they certainly have some examples of a park that would be outstanding. You have a lot of parks. I've seen the parks. I've walked them. I've run them. I don't like to say mediocre, but there is a big difference between Depot Park somewhere else and Depot Park that you have. I understand that people want to see the riverfront protected and be another park. But my feeling is, is you need to spend time on your other parks and bring them up to a standard that's outstanding, especially ones like Depot Park that are so close to your downtown area. That's very unique with a lot of cities because their parks aren't so close to the downtown. Your goal to develop a downtown walking area has to include the parks that are associated with that because they're going to be as much of a draw as your restaurants and your retail stores. I would rather see you take the money that you want to build a park along the river and start by improving what you have and make them really outstanding, superb parks that can really represent your community, because parks do change. As they change and they mature, their needs are different, and the idea of what it's for is different. And I just want to try to... I'd just like to see you spend more of your time with other parks and work with your developer, and try to come to something that's agreeable to both people who like parks, but also knowing that you need to have development to be able to proceed with your downtown vision of having a walkable downtown. And that's about it.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Council. My name's Kyle Moran. I've been a resident of Benita Springs and the areas near downtown Benita since nineteen ninety-three. I really remember the days when Benita was the most neglected part of Lee County, and our downtown was really deteriorated and dangerous. And our downtown is in some sort of peril again today. We might be on the verge of taking a big step towards the much-delayed revitalization of this long-blyted area. But we also risk sentencing downtown to continue suffering from subpar economic activity and a lackluster public image for decades to come. Moving forward with the best possible development partner to help activate that downtown is the next logical and necessary step of our two-decade journey towards revitalizing that downtown. I've got a great respect, and I've listened very carefully to a lot of the individuals that are opposed to new development on that property. I have no doubt that they're well-intentioned, but I fear that they're falling into a trap that we've seen before. A number of years ago, we undertook this idea of a historical building sanctuary downtown. In fact, we formed a citizens committee that spent seven years with city staff help looking at that idea. Ultimately, they came to this council asking for tens of thousands of dollars to hire an outside consultant. And that consultant came back after a long report and said that it was absolutely not economically feasible. We can't afford to fall into another expensive and time-consuming trap. It's too costly. It just doesn't work. Development has always been the plan for this property. We've sought developers for this property for years. The comprehensive plan of our city says that we need to establish a social center and a heart. It says, quote, "As the center of Benita Springs' historic origin, the downtown district should be a unique mix of restaurants, retail shops, and entertainment, all complemented by the ambiance of the surrounding neighborhoods in the Imperial River," end quote. We have already incurred great expense laying the groundwork for development down there. We changed our code. In fact, that code identifies Bamboo Village as having the highest density in all of downtown. DPZ, who's been mentioned before, world-class consultants, they drew up their concepts for that area, and they look a lot like what we've seen from Baron Collier. We've also assembled a truly fantastic community development staff led by John Dolmer. And you know what their job is? It's to hold developers accountable and make sure that any new development is as positive as possible for the city. So having spent two decades accomplishing all of these things only to designate Bamboo Village as non-developable, that would send a chill over the entire downtown that may take generations to thaw. You're being asked to consider suggestions to turn this park into a park like Baker Park in Naples or Danville Park in Virginia. The improvements to those parks cost over ten million dollars each. If we go that route, we're going to drown our city in debt and higher taxes. On the other hand, the proposal that we're looking at from developers like Baron Collier Companies, those could bring tens of millions of dollars into city coffers over the long term as we share lease revenues with those companies. It would also allow us to build our tax base and to add jobs so that eventually, we can do more without having to raise tax rates. The contrast is stark, and the decision is dire. But let's focus on the positive. What you really see before you today are two groups identifying two different needs. One sees a need for better parks. The other sees a need for better development. We can and should address both needs. Depot and Island Parks have seven and a half acres of undeveloped parkland spanning both sides of the river, and they're part of more than seventy acres downtown. Two seconds. Let's figure out how to improve those parks. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I'm a thirty-year resident. I'm not reading the letter from someone. I'm asking for thirty seconds. Will you please grant it to me? Thank you, sir. Let's figure out how to improve those parks. Let's make sure any... The mayor has granted. The... Let's also make sure that Bamboo includes park space, and let's make sure to move forward with a plan to engage a good developer downtown when we can make it a win-win for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For the record, uh, my name is Jim Magnus. Uh, good evening, uh, good to see you all, I'm Mayor Steinmeier, uh, City Council and, uh, city staff. Um, I'll make this really relatively quick here. Uh, I'd like to start by, uh, commending you for keeping the process moving on the Bamboo parcel and specifically working with facilitator to establish what the council wants to see in a project on that parcel. If you look back, this is, City Council's desire for the property are very similar to the past council's wishes and in line with the various studies the city has paid, uh, money to get recommendations on. Our family is heavily invested in the city, we love, love Benita Springs. We own a number of parcels in the city and operate several businesses as well. We've committed over three million dollars to develop the parcel on Old Forty-One across from Riverside Park. We hope to complete our project rooftop at Riverside before the end of twenty twenty-two. It's our hope that our commitment to the Old Forty-One corridor, as well as the city's investment of over twenty-five million dollars to upgrade the roads, the sidewalks, the landscape, and utilities will spur additional growth for the downtown corridor. Under item number fourteen of the city attorney's, uh, agenda regarding the Bamboo property, uh, our family supports the council moving forward on either the Baron Collier Company proposal or the Noah Properties proposal. Both of these companies have presented a way forward that supports further council, staff, and neighborhood input. I do not know the Noah Property people very well, however, I am very familiar with Baron Collier Companies group and have the utmost respect for the people and their project. I've worked with their CEO Blake Gabel and found him to be open, fair, honest, and flexible in getting deals done for the benefit of all parties. Baron Collier Companies has the experience and the resources in this market to get the job done. I believe the council will be very happy if they decide to use Baron Collier Companies. The council has set the stage with the list of requirements with facilitator. Please give Baron Collier the opportunity and the time to explore with community what the final development can really look like and provide the growth for the downtown corridor. I appreciate you all listening. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on recess. Okay, uh, we're back in session, and a few people didn't get a chance to speak at public comment, and please come forward at this time if you didn't get a chance to speak in the last session. Hurry up. I'm not a doctor, I don't have any patience.
Get it, okay, I get it, but why are we doing this?
Yeah, and why, why are people getting to sleep?
We closed by-
Okay, so my, my, I don't have so much commentary as, as much-
What's your name?
Dan Lubicki. As much as, uh, questions. And, uh, I understand that you had a, uh, you know, planner in years past, but a lot of things have changed downtown and in the, the city in general. And I would like to know, is there a downside to reaching out to an outside, um, open-space planner to take another look at it and give, give his, you know, their options, uh, what would be best for the city? Is there a downside to that? Is there downside to that? I'm talking myself over here, I guess.
This is not a question to answer, unfortunately.
Yeah, so, what, excuse me-
There is a downside, we've been working on this for eighteen years, and-
Yeah, but things have changed in, in that eighteen years.
There is a downside in cost and time. If that's the answer to the question, now what else do you got?
So, uh, I, I would like to know what, uh, why there's no, in, no mention of, uh, this in, in, in the, the newspapers of upcoming things. The, the city newsletter, I, I scoured, I've looked for, uh, mention of this meeting. I saw nothing, I saw fireworks. Um, uh, is, is, I guess I'll just ask the question, these are rhetorical questions, I guess. Uh, why, why fifty-six thousand people don't know about it? Why is, why isn't, another question would be why, uh, fifty-six thousand people aren't being polled what they want, um, uh, which is easy enough to do with electronic, you know, online Survey Monkey, whatever. And, um, I would like to see, find out what fifty-six thousand people want. It doesn't matter what I want, I understand that. So, uh, I would, uh, encourage council and mayor to, uh, see that happen. Ask, ask the, uh, ask the population what they want. And, uh, whatever they want, I'm cool with that, you know, it's not, it's not my town. So, uh, um, what else? You know, really, that's it. I, I would like to see, uh, a, a broader, uh, inquiry as to what the people want, you know? And I, I feel it's unfair for mayor and the council to, to have this dropped on your head, something that's eighteen years old, somebody else's, uh, I used the term dirty laundry, yeah, that's not accurate, but, uh, uh, it wasn't, wasn't your project, and, and here it is, it's like, well, here it is, fix it now, eighteen years later. So, uh, that's what I would li, like to see, is, uh, kind of put this on hold and, uh, ask the populat, to the populace what, what they want. And then you know, and, and you could deliver that in conjunction with a, uh, a public space planner that's done projects that are, uh, suitable, uh, comparable to what council's wanting and, and the population wants, and, uh, and then we go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next, please.
Good evening, I just want to make it short, um, Mr. Mayor, council persons. Uh, I, I'm just shocked by one thing, I don't understand why people speak about park dead and development li, life, you know, and it's not exactly, not at all what we're talking about. We're talking about a public space where you can have public buildings that are, will run and will bring people there. Pop-up events, you can have a theater month, you can have a, a circus month, you can make it life, real life. A concrete building, a concrete place where you have, um, commercial businesses, we have that all over the place. It's, it's existing everywhere. What you don't have is something different. You can be different, you have the choice, it's a very hard choice, and I have all the respect in the world for you, because it's a very hard choice. You have to project yourself in what people want today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for opening it back up to public comment. Uh, Mayor and Council, yes, it is a tough decision, and I've been in your seat. I made the wrong decision when I voted on this. Um, I think it does need to be, I love her idea, I think she was in the survey, yes, I love your idea. Um, I do think it needs to be remaining in the hands of the public and to be something you need-
So, did you introduce your-
I'm sorry, Martha Simons, Benita Springs. Thank you, Mayor. Um, we do have condos and commercial development everywhere you look, and people move to Benita Springs 'cause we're a unique city. And how are we gonna be unique, having more condos and commercial development? So I love her idea about making it a public fun kind of thing. Do you remember years ago, there was a gentleman who offered to put a carousel there? Okay, it might be noisy for the neighbors, but it was a different approach. And, you know, we have the Everglades Wonder Gardens, which we purchased for three million dollars. Nobody's telling us to sell that, okay? Um, I just really hope, I, and I know it's tough, I know it's really tough, but you only have one chance to look yourself in the mirror and say, "I did the right thing by my conscience." Okay? I blew it. So stick with your conscience.
Thank you. No applause anymore, I'll clear the place. Anybody else? Moving along, that's it. Number nine, A, zoning. This, uh-
Mayor-
Nine A was approved by the zoning board, and I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, agree with the zoning board, and I'll make a motion we pass this.
I'll second.
And now, what I would recommend-
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we need public comment on this. Any public comment about? Nine A. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Excuse me.
And you wanna talk?
Yes, I would.
Well, go ahead, Amy.
Really, honestly, I would like to have regular, uh, procedures here.
This is a regular procedure, I'm the boss and you're not.
You're not, you're not the boss.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Fine, I love Rick.
Rick, you are not-
I am following procedure.
Okay. Well, I will tell you-
We got a motion and a second.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Now, discussion.
Let me speak now, without being interrupted rudely. I would like to follow the typical procedures that we have and have at least a summary presentation by the staff who worked on this. That's the, what the people are entitled to have when they have things brought before the council.
Well, I asked for motion, and I asked for a vote, and let's take a vote, let's have the vote.
Discussion, and discussion includes-
We don't have to do that if we vote.
I don't know enough to vote until we get through the discussion, so we're gonna have a discussion.
First, we need public comment. We have any public comment on this issue?
No, 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 no. We had, we, no public comment, at this point, there's, there's a motion and a second. If, if the, there's, we're in discussion on the motion. If the motion fails, then a new motion can pu, come forward and, or a new suggestion on procedure.
Can I ask a question, Council?
I didn't hear the microphone.
Yeah, is this, um, procedure, which is not normal, is this gonna cause a problem for us if we?
This, this would be, this would be a, this is still a quasi-judicial hearing, but it would be done solely based on, on, uh, the submittals. So the staff presentation, the staff record, the applicant's presentation is all a matter of record, so they would just be accepted on that basis. If there is any members of the public who are, who are concerned or wish to oppose the project, they have the opportunity to come forth and cross-examine witnesses and, and raise issues, so.
And if a council member has questions, can-
So the only, the only-
Let's, let's, settle down here.
The only way to have our staff give the presentation is to vote this motion down?
I recommend that you take the action on-
And then, can we bring it forward again?
Absolutely, you can make that motion right then.
All right, so we'll vote the motion down, but it doesn't prejudice what we finally will actually vote on?
No, my, my recommendation would be that if, if you are inclined to vote against this motion, that you note that your vote against it is based on, uh, desire, not against, not to prejudice the applicant, but in order to hear from presentations.
Or can we just hear a presentation?
No, he said no.
I called, I made a motion. We vote out a motion, it's denied, then we'll go-
You can withdraw your second, Laura.
Your second.
I have a second.
I know, I withdrew my second. So, this presentation, please.
Can we get a brief presentation on the matter?
Uh, Mayor, I mean, um-
I don't, I don't want a promotion, I'm good.
Is the public comment next, or?
The public comment's already been concluded, but the, but the, uh, without a-
For this article?
Without a second, the motion cannot go forward.
Okay. Public comment, is that now?
Well, we already had public comment, there was no public comment.
On this, on this?
On this item, what I would, Mr. Mayor, what I would recommend is that you allow staff to give a brief presentation, and it's my understanding that the remainder of the council may be willing to take action at that point.
We said at the beginning of the meeting it was public comment except for zoning.
Except for zoning, and we opened it up for public comment, and no one-
When, when did we open up for public comment on zoning?
The mayor, the mayor asked for public comment, and I didn't see anyone-
That was a continuation.
Can we just move on? Mary, please. It was confusing, I don't go, I don't believe it was open up to public.
It's hot in here, it's a long meeting, everyone's getting a little punchy, it's all-
Anybody want to second my motion?
Go.
Good evening, Council, my name is Mary Zizo, Community Development Staff. This is a request for Grace Classical Academy located at thirty-nine seventy-one Via Del Ray for a two-phased expansion of enrollment of their existing school located within the New Life Church campus. The first phase is to enroll ninety students, they are currently permitted forty-eight students. Um, the ninety students would be within their existing footprint of the Family Life Center building. The second phase would be for a hundred and sixty students within the existing building, and then the addition of additional structures, um, be it portable or modular classrooms. Staff does recommend approval with the conditions laid out in the staff report and in the zoning resolution provided, and the applicant and staff are in agreement on these conditions.
Are there any? Any questions for staff or the applicant?
I, I have a question. I'd just like to have you review, um, the, um, the controversial part of this, which was, uh, the, uh, traffic in regard to Mango Drive and how, uh, that's been mitigated by the conditions that you have expressed.
So we did receive public participation regarding the traffic along Mango Drive. Um, since the hearing, we received a speed assessment survey performed by the Sheriff's Office at the request of the residents. Staff did this, did discuss the survey with the Sheriff's Office and our traffic engineer, Tom Ross, who's on the line today if we would like him. The summary concluded that there was no speeding issue on Mango Drive and that the number of trips was incidental to the report and that no determination can be made from solely the data provided. A full traffic impact analysis would be required. As it pertains to this request, the applicant proposes absolutely no traffic onto Mango Drive. They will put up cones at pickup and drop-off to prevent any of the school traffic from using Mango Drive. Further, we've ensured that all traffic using Via Del Ray will be guided by staff members to ensure that there's no traffic backup on the Via Del Ray or Vanderbilt Drive at that.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no, if there's no objection, I, I would recommend, if there seems to be some com, confusion, that you reopen the public comment to see if there's any public who might have been confused. Since there seems to be some confusion as to whether there was public comment on this item, I would, I would recommend opening it up to see if there's any public comment.
Anybody public comment on the, uh, nine A? Seeing none?
Yes, I am.
Rebuttal?
No.
No rebuttal?
I have questions, uh, with respect to the traffic issues. Uh, I received a copy of the, uh, Lee County Sheriff's Office, uh, survey, and I had the occasion to speak to Blake Lee, uh, concerning this, this afternoon. Uh, the summary is, is, and I passed this out. Uh, the summary is on page two of the, uh, report. Uh, this was a, an assessment of the traffic for one week on Mango Drive. There were a total of, uh, seventy-six hundred and sixty-six vehicle counts, of which, uh, vehicles under the speed limit was thirty-one hundred and eighty-four. Uh, going south, away from, away north, there were two thousand and twenty-two exceeding the speed limit, or a combined of five thousand two hundred and six cars speeding on that drive during the week that they monitored. I'm sorry, that was the number under the speed limit. The number over in total was twenty-four hundred and sixty. Uh, in total, there were something in the order of nine thousand vehicle trips up and down that road. In a residential road, uh, most of that traffic is associated with, um, non-residents. It's associated with schools, pickup and, uh, uh, drop-offs. And, uh, this community that surrounds that does not have any sidewalks. And, you know, people who are walking in the area are contending with over nine thousand vehicle trips a week. I asked Blake Lee what he thought about that, he says it's up to council, but he would not want to see that in his neighborhood. So I just offer that for council's consideration. I am going to, uh, vote to disapprove this zoning until such time as there is a gate established at, uh, the school that is only available for emergency use and until, or until such time as, uh, the school wants to build a sidewalk in that community.
Okay, Jesse?
I'd just like to say real quick, if this is gonna go forward, that, two things that I would like to do, and, and I would like to, number one, um, get with community policing and figure out what we can do in regards to, uh, regularly scheduled- get with community policing and figure out what we can do in regards to regularly scheduled trips to Mango daily. And then, you know, put the clause in there about the three verifiable complaints. So, when and if there are verifiable complaints, there's a mechanism to do it. But at the same time, it has to be verifiable. So, you can't get people who are just mad about the project putting in fake complaints. But that way, we can at least monitor it, see if there's issues and kind of still move forward. The... I mean, one of the things that we have to consider here that's very tough on this is, you know, not only would it be precedent setting, but additionally, you know, we're taking away the private property rights that we have already given the church. They already have those. So, to me, taking those away isn't necessarily the route I would like to go. And I definitely don't like telling Christian charter schools no in Benita. At the same time, I think if we do move forward, I think there's things that we can do to mitigate the damage or perceived damage that will be caused by the expansion of the students at that school.
Yes. Let me try, maybe if I could. I happened to watch this on TV, the zoning board procedure on this, and they voted to approve it. And they had all the information. So, I'm going to go along with the zoning board. Mango is not part of what the zoning is about. Mango is far... Is blocked off from what this... Maybe the city or the attorney might be able to explain it to better. But the traffic coming and going to the school, which is what we're at, is what we're looking at, is not going to affect Mango. So, yes, Sharon?
Council, if I may, the report provided did not conclude where those cars were being headed to. A traffic impact statement was provided with this application. The applicant and his traffic engineer are here as well if you would like for them to expand on those items. We also have our traffic engineer. And included in condition number eleven, we do very closely monitor... We plan to very closely monitor this operation should it be approved to ensure that absolutely no use of Mango Drive is used by the school. And we have already implemented that condition for a temporary use for them, and they have very closely followed that condition.
So, what the condition indicates is that the access to Mango Drive is closed off during school drop-off and pickup. So, going to the mayor's comment is there may be existing issues on Mango with respect to traffic, but they are... If they're not related to this request, they may not have any bearing on the council's decision. Now, if those... Obviously, if those traffic conditions as far as the temporary barriers are not followed and we find out that they are not followed and the traffic doesn't post, then that would be a violation of the approval.
And we included a condition that if we do find a violation three times, then it will return back to you for reconsideration.
And I want the community policing part of that too.
This is also a complication. Oh, Amy, you're next, honey.
Why don't we...
Mr. Mayor.
We have a number... Mr. Mayor, could you maybe start from one side or the other and...
Yeah, let's start here with Fred.
Okay. Well, all I was going to say...
I'm changing direction.
I had spoken with Blake Lee as well. He assured me that the count was seventy-six hundred plus was a total for the week. Now, even if it was a higher figure, which I don't believe it was because we talked about that at great length, when you divide that by the seven weeks and how many hours it's over, it's not very many cars on that road. So, it's not... But I agree with those that would support the fact if there is a problem, it'll come back here.
Hey, Mike, do you have anything to say on this?
Yeah, I want to echo the concerns for Mango. I know it's hard to judge who the culprits are, if it's people going to the church or the school at the church or not. But I just know that the people on Mango aren't happy with all the extra cars and speeding on the road. So, I mean, I don't know if we can have them put in the emergency gate like they've been asking for on the backside of the church property. That way, you know, regardless if they put cones out or forget to put cones out, we know it's blocked off for sure. And also, just to have Public Works look at possibly doing the speed tables on Mango to help slow down cars. Because I believe part of the problem is the light there at Vanderbilt. It's a long light waiting for that turn signal. And, you know, either the possibility of having the flashing yellow arrows to turn there. That way, cars don't have to wait, you know, a whole light cycle if there's a break in traffic coming from the beach side. But I think there's other things that we need to be looking at outside of this zoning issue just to help with the problem on Mango. So, regardless of how this goes, we still need to look at Mango. So, that's all for now.
Thank you, Mike. Chris, do you have your comment?
Well, I was just wanting to note... I was a little confused by Fred's comment about how long the study was. The study took place between April thirteenth and April twentieth, so it was one week. And if the number of vehicles north and south was seventy-six hundred and sixty-six, that's over a thousand cars a day, which seems like a lot to me to be on Mango.
Do we have an average for what it would look like in the city? Is that like... Is a thousand crazy or is it not?
Wait, wait, wait a minute. We're going around one time.
Okay.
It's not your turn yet.
But I would suggest that that's pretty heavy. And I lost my train of thought, but I'll let you move on.
Okay, Laura, please.
Okay.
It's your district.
Yes, and I've been to Mango several times. I've met with the pastor. I've met with the head of the school. I've met with several neighbors. I went when the heaviest violation of using Mango was going to happen. And I saw one car. Two days later, I saw two cars. And three days later, I didn't see any cars. I then asked the head of Community Development to join me and the neighbors. And they're just adamant that people are speeding and using this entrance. And I didn't see... I didn't see it. So, I'm not saying it didn't happen. But the number of cars going down that street per day, I don't think there are that many cars, you know, going down Benita Beach Road at this time during that day. But so, I questioned the study. It just doesn't make any sense. Who would even want to go down Mango to... No offense to Mango. But, you know, it doesn't go anywhere. And, you know, and so, you don't want to go through the church because there's all sorts of speed bumps. There's all sorts of little kids. And I don't... You know, so if you're picking up your child, maybe you might do it that way. But what the church has proposed is to set up a pickup line where everybody moves. And believe me, parents, that's what they want. They want a conveyor that moves, just like what we want with water. We want it all to keep moving in the right direction, and that is not down Mango. And the church does everything in its power to tell its constituents not to go down. Now, of course, some people are gonna. I mean, you know, hey, I cut through fifth third. I always say to myself, I could always say I don't have my bank card on me. I do have an account there. But I really shouldn't be doing that. So, everybody does a little shortcuts, but I don't believe that this is an issue, at least for the week. Really, three days. And John Dolan was there for another... For an hour as well. And he also saw nothing. So, I am voting in favor and we monitor the situation. If they want to put speed traps out, put speed traps out. And people on Mango, beware. You're going to be the ones getting the tickets. I mean, that's what happens. I mean, really, you don't want that and you don't want speed bumps. But anyway, that's my opinion.
Jesse?
I just... Yeah, I'm ready to vote. I think the community policing and the verifiable complaints makes me comfortable enough at this point, I think.
Yeah, I think it's important to...
Can you get closer to the mic? Whisper or something.
I think it's important to separate a problem that may exist on Mango Drive and a problem that may be caused by the existence of the school and an expansion there. And I think that the staff has articulated a process by which we should have comfort that there will be no more additions to whatever problem there may or may not be there on Mango. So, I support... I'm going to support this project as long as we tighten up whatever monitoring systems we have in place. But I also concur with Jesse and say that the city should somehow initiate some kind of a process by which we can analyze if Mango is having some kind of unusual effect because of these cut-throughs from Vanderbilt built road on the light or somewhere else. If there is a problem, we should know about it and see what we can do about it.
Okay, Laura, you have to make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
Would that... Just for clarification, would that motion include Councilmember Pardon's community policing?
No, just go ahead with... And we'll have staff oversee. So, you second and then Fred?
I second.
I think it's pretty...
I'm going to second any other comments. May we get a roll call, Deb?
Councilman Pardon?
Did your motion include accepting all the staff's recommendations?
Yes.
Good, okay.
But not my recommendations.
Correct.
But it is the staff's.
Is it the staff's recommendation that they'll be regularly monitored by community policing?
Not by community policing, but by staff.
And we can ask the sheriff to block that.
I will defer to the councilwoman. It is her district and I'll vote yes, I suppose.
Okay. Councilwoman Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Can you just restate the motion because you guys were cutting in and out? If you can, just please clearly speak into the microphone as best as possible.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion is to approve the special exception request or the zoning resolution with all the staff conditions.
Okay. Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbia?
Aye.
What's the count there, Debbie? Does she pass? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, another school, nine B.
Mr. Mayor, I know that the... And we've got a long agenda and I know that it's unusually hot in here today, but I would recommend that we tried to speed things up in the last hearing and it didn't work out the way I think the council was hoping. So, my recommendation would be to allow staff to give a brief presentation. Give the opportunity of the applicant to come up and see if you would like them to give a presentation and then open the public hearing and just try to see if we can get to just the issues.
Good idea.
So, a brief presentation, Mary.
This is a request for Discovery Day Academy for a special exception for seventy-two students at a K through five private school located at two-five-three-five-five South Tamiami Trail in the southwestern building, which would cooperate with a daycare operation of forty children. The daycare operation is a permitted use. This was assessed for traffic impacts as well as site impacts due to the two uses and the high intensity commercial use. The zoning board recommendation was approval of four to three with the condition that we work with the applicant on conditions for compatibility. There was one abstain. One, Chairman Rasio thought it was an inappropriate location and Mr. Hertenson believed he needed to see the full picture before voting. Staff does recommend approval of this request as conditioned. Since the zoning board hearing, we have worked diligently with the applicant to ensure that the conditions will provide for the health, safety and welfare of the students, especially the safety portion of that, as well as to enhance the community commercial zoning district that it exists within. The site plan provided shows that they are proposing a secured play area along the eastern side of the building. Because of this location, we required within the conditions a six-foot vinyl fence surrounding this play area as well as extensive landscaping beyond our requirements in the land development code to ensure that no vehicle could enter the site due to the amount of trees there to protect the children inside. As well, the height of the fence will ensure that those within the site cannot escape. Or wander.
Wander.
Our concern with this location was the proximity of the site to the intersection at Burnwood Parkway and US forty-one. It is just north... I'm sorry. That's just north of Spring Creek Elementary School, which has a capacity of seven-hundred-and-twenty-three students. However, as mentioned, the applicant did work with us. And the condition we have is that a raised barrier will be put right at the intersection to only allow for a ride-in, ride-out to the Prado Plaza to ensure that no left turns are made in or out, preventing unsafe conditions there. The peak traffic times for Discovery Day Academy are closely aligned with the peak traffic for Spring Creek Elementary, which again, went towards our analysis. And for that reason, the applicant has proposed that all of their school traffic will leave from the midpoint access and the Timberwell Drive access, which are both north of this site, to prevent traffic going onto Burnwood Parkway. And then another concern we looked at was the potential for queuing during the drop-off and pickup at Discovery Day Academy, blocking the traffic flow from entering or being blocked by Chamber of Commerce Drive. However, the conditions, as mentioned, do very strictly condition the operation of the school to ensure the safety and the operation of the school within that plaza. We do find that this request meets the findings for the special exception criteria. There is a change in the demographics of retail. There is an increase in the student population of the city. The testimony of the public included concerns along Burnwood Parkway, so we heavily address that. And there were concerns regarding the existing restaurants at the plaza. If they have outdoor consumption currently, they will be permitted to continue that operation. Should a new restaurant choose to do so, they will then need to get a special exception similar to this process. We do find that this request is consistent with the commercial future land use of the Benita Plan. This is an appropriate use within that land use category and there's adequate connections to the public facilities. The site can accommodate all of their stacking entirely within their parking lot in addition to their sixty-seven parking spaces that they have. Their operation is mostly pickup and drop-off, but with the daycare operation, parents are permitted to park and pick up their children inside. So, as mentioned, we condition the proposed play area. The US forty-one overlay district requires a sidewalk to connect from out parcels to principal buildings. So, the applicants worked with us and are willing to do so to encourage the commercial use of this plaza. And as mentioned, the permanent raised curb improvement will be input to ensure safety at that location in accordance with as well what Public Works was allowing at that location. So, staff does recommend approval with the conditions outlined in the zoning resolution provided to you. What is highlighted is what was changed from zoning board after collaboration and discussions with the applicant. And I'm sorry, but what was underlined was further added to just enhance the understanding of what is required with that condition. If you'd like to hear from the applicant, we can do so, or if you have any questions, please let me know.
Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I have a question. I have a question.
We're around the horn here.
Well, Chris, look at the speakers.
I'm going to... Don't ignore that.
I'm good.
I'm going to run around the corner. I'm going to do it different tonight.
I'm good now.
Okay, Mike, do you have any comment on this?
And I'm good. I'm motion to approve with the staff conditions.
Yes, could you explain to me? I'm a little confused about how close the school will be to the Prado movie theaters and the traffic associated with that.
Do you know the old Congress building?
The building where the yellow leads to is the movie theater.
Yep.
The building where the red is is the proposed school.
And what, is that where the Stein Mart location was?
No.
It used to be a gold and jewelry store.
Okay, alright. And then, isn't there some provision within zoning that a bar cannot be located within five-hundred feet of a school?
So the existing restaurants and bars would be grandfathered in. Any new ones with outdoor consumption, restaurants with outdoor consumption, would require a special exception, yes.
It would be limited.
Thank you.
Laura, please.
I think it's an odd place, but it works. I mean, you know, it really could work, and I think that there's a need for private schools, and so I'm voting in favor.
Jesse?
I feel like I'm probably gonna be alone on this, but I just, I don't feel this is the appropriate place for a school. Because I feel Burnwood has two feeder schools and a daycare already feeding onto it, and it's a mess. So I feel, and additionally, it's in a commercial, it used to be a jewelry store. This was never a school zone. This was never intended to be a school zone. And then furthermore, just to get to the nuts and bolts of how this thing has come about, and I'm probably the most pro-development person up here, and I don't think people argue with that. But I think the way that the process went here, I don't appreciate how it went. Because the reality is, if I'm not mistaken, they have a demo permit. If I'm not mistaken, they also have a number of students, one-hundred-and-fifty, who already think that they're going to school there. So they haven't gotten the permits from us appropriately, yet they're already telling these families that they can count on their kids going to school there. So now that puts us in the spot of telling these families, you know, you don't have a place to go to school because we don't like the location. But the fact of the matter is, if they would've asked us prior to spending a million dollars, if we thought that was a good location for a school, we would've said, no, it was a jewelry store before, and that isn't an area that we would put one. So I don't like to reward bad behavior. And I feel as if by voting yes for this, we're essentially telling developers they can come to town, they can spend what they want to spend against the advice of staff, which told them, hey, there's numerous steps in this, and you may not get approved. And now we're in a situation where, hey, you guys vote for it, our one-hundred-and-fifty kids don't have a place to go to school. No. And if that makes me the bad guy for calling it is what it is, then fine. But the reality is, they put us in this position by not following the appropriate process. I love charter schools. I'm a good, God-fearing Christian. I have a Bible right here. It's nothing against that at all. It's the process and respect for the process and consistency from up here on how things should work. So for all those reasons, I'm a no, but I understand if I'm alone on that.
Amy?
I actually was troubled by a similar thing that Jesse just talked about. And I was gonna ask, because this came up in the zoning meeting, that somebody had suggested that they were already redoing this building. So my question is, how could this be happening? How are they doing work on this building without coming to zoning? So if you just, staff would just explain that to me?
The only work that is permitted at the site right now is the demolition permit. That is irregardless of zoning. But any building permits that they have or their site permit, none of those have been approved. They're pending this request.
And a question, I'm sorry, I didn't ask this. As far as the thing that Chris asked about, about the space, or Fred asked about, about the space, are we now putting the rest of the plaza in a situation where we can't turn over commercial units as bars or restaurants because they sell alcohol?
If the commercial space, if a restaurant is vacant for more than six months-
So if you just, staff, just explain that to me.
Mike, you're-
Who is that?
That's Mike. Yeah, could you explain that to Mike?
I'm sorry, what did he say?
He wants to know about five-hundred feet from Liquors.
So even more particular with this site is that it's the same exact property as the movie theater. It's all located within one property. But any new bars or, I'm sorry, any new restaurants or restaurants vacant for more than six months will then require a special exception to have outdoor consumption. So if they want to have outdoor seating. However, the existing restaurants such as Sorella's, they will be permitted to continue on with their operation. It's solely if they go away for more than six months.
And it's really the owner of the mall or the Prado Center that's his or her problem, right? We don't care if they can't rent the place because nobody can consume alcohol. It's not our problem.
Correct. They approved this question.
We're the person of changing our zoning for this, because then if we do this here, then other places want to do it, and then-
But things are changing.
Right, but what is a commercial zoning is no longer a commercial zoning, because one of the main uses for it is gone, because we're saying, well, now it's a school area. You can't. It's not a school area. It's not a school area.
Actually, it could be a training.
I'd just like to follow up on my comment is, I also see that you have, there are some issues about the parking and the stacking and how that's all gonna work. And you had, I think, provision that there will be an annual report upon that. I think that there are a lot of issues about this, and I agree in part with what Jesse said, but I'm not prepared to vote no on this. I think it's inappropriate use, but the mall owner, it's their private property to decide what kind of business they want in there. And we've had, the staff has, I think, did the best they can to try to protect this from other kinds of influences. But I really don't think this is the right place for the school. But that's their decision, and we, as a council, have to be certain that we could put in some protections. But I would like them reviewed a lot more frequently than annually. I think we would like to revisit this maybe in the first time in about three or four months. And if any of this is not working, then I think we should shut it down. And then have an annual report after that.
In Grace Classical, we did quarterly reporting. If you would feel more comfortable with that, we can look at that. And then similar, if we observe three times that they are not complying, then we have to notify them each time, and then it will come back to you for reconsideration.
Because I think we do have a responsibility to be certain that anything that goes in there doesn't have any inherent safety issues. And it's not clear by what we're doing here whether, I think I can feel completely comfortable with it. So that would be my added condition if the rest of the council agrees with it. But I really would like to somehow get it across to people who might come forward in the future to don't start down this path, because they should not count on council just giving a positive response to these things without our looking at it in the first place. And there were, I think there was a lot of dissension on zoning board. And in the staff report, I mean, if you really read what you said, you were not happy with a lot of things. And somehow your mind was changed. I was surprised when you finally came and had a kind of positive response, because I didn't feel comfortable reading through your staff report.
Because of the expedited process of this, by the time we were at zoning board, we were provided even more information to enhance our findings. And after discussion with the applicant, they finally understood our conditions and why we put those safeguards in place. So we felt this was appropriate so long as these conditions were required.
Okay, can I chime in here?
Mr. Mayor, could I add one little thing?
Let me get my point in here first.
Absolutely.
I watched this hearing, and again, we have a problem with schools. They all start at the same time, and they all leave at the same time. And the parents show up at the same time. And ten minutes later, or half an hour, everybody's gone and everything's back to some sort of normal. We have a staff, I mean, we have a zoning board that is very comprehensive in their study, as you are. And I want to go along with the recommendation of the zoning board. Fred, would you like to-
All I would like to do is piggyback on what Amy said. I think we want to put in there the reporting, and that if they go above what the stated number of students is, it comes back, like we have on the other one. That needs to be added to it. And the other thing I want to say, Jesse's right. They went ahead and signed a lease, did all kind of work on the building, told parents that they were gonna be able to attend school. And it worked this time, but I don't press your luck and do it again. Because I think that we don't want that, and I think I would like our staff to be aggressive, and if they see somebody moving ahead like this, shut it down. Because that's the way you get it stopped.
Public comment now.
Well, Mr. Mayor, what I would ask is-
Are the applicant-
Because we kind of went off, and I would ask the applicant to come up, and if you would like them to give a presentation, or if they at least would like to address some of the comments they've heard from the council, and then open up the public comment before moving on the item.
For the record, Tina Eklad, I'm the President and Director of Planning at Morris to Pew Associates. I will keep my comments brief to what I've heard so far. I think you have a good handle on the request. So the first thing that I will say is, we are agreeable to the quarterly reporting that's been requested regarding the site function and a comprehensive annual report. If that's how the council decides to amend the condition, we do not object. With regard to what is happening in the building, yes, we did apply for improvements on the interior of the building for that permit. Those are allowed regardless of whether or not we succeed today, and are solely based on the financial situation and the timing of what is happening. You all clearly have read the minutes, and so I will just reiterate a few other items. The current location of the Discovery Day Academy is no longer theirs for financial reasons due to COVID. And so, yes, they must relocate. What I would like to clarify is that the parents do not expect to show up here in a few weeks because they understand this process, and we've been very clear that we have to come to you for approval. So I do appreciate the perspective that you may have. We are simply trying to run permits at the same time so that we can open. It's not a situation where we know we are going to get approval. We respect this process. We're just trying to make sure that students do have a place to go at the beginning of the school year. I understand it looks like we think it's a foregone conclusion, but we do know that it's not. And so I hope you'll understand the position of the academy where their current building is no longer theirs for financial reasons. And so they sought a new location on a very constrained timeline. And we do acknowledge the process and that ultimately this is your decision. So hopefully that helps to address the situation. In terms of the conditions and the zoning board and the discomfort, I think that your staff has done a very good job in working with us in between the two meetings. We have come to an agreement on the traffic and the stacking issues, and I would hope that you would trust their staff report that is associated with this meeting. We've done a lot of work. We've had a lot of conversations, and we think we've given you a product that, given the location, works. Now, with regard to the existing plaza, the current owner of the plaza has applied for this special exception. He is aware of everything that is going on. We have explained that the restaurants that are there can continue to be there. A new restaurant can sign a lease. They can continue to serve alcohol inside the building. That is not an issue. That is not a situation where they will be denied. The extra hurdle that we are talking about is simply outdoor seating, which is up to the restaurant owner to ask for currently anyway. Based on the function of the plaza, some places have it, some don't. So yes, we acknowledge that is an extra hurdle. The owner is aware of that. He understands. And he has continued to make the decision for Discovery Day to sign their lease and execute this. So I'm happy to answer questions that you may have, but I do think you have a good handle on the request, and I just wanted to clarify those items.
Yes, thank you. You have adequate parking for this school in your, on this property, right?
Yes, based on the required ratio in the Land Development Code, we have an adequate number of spaces.
And it's separated from any main highway?
Yes, as well as the remainder of the plaza.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Public comment?
Public comment on this issue?
Yes, Alex Grant, I used to be formerly on the City Council. My problem is public safety for the kids. And I'm concerned about too much traffic in coming into that type of a shopping center. And I am very concerned that there is a liability issue. Because if you put small kids and traffic together, you're asking for an accident. I would deny it.
Thank you, Alex. Anybody else? You have a motion? Did you make a motion?
I did, sir.
And?
I was second.
Second it?
So roll call.
Any more comments? Do we have a roll call?
Can I clarify the motion for the record? We have the quarterly reporting. Was there any other conditions that were, I know there were some conditions discussed. Were there any other conditions being placed?
Quarterly reporting and about the amount of students they have, and if it goes up, it has to come back like the other place.
No objection to that? Alright, so-
Can you clarify that?
He's saying that the student level will be the same on the report.
Same deal as we had on Grace. In other words, if they've stated a goal, a max goal, if they go over it, it's gotta be come back here, because that affects traffic. It affects a whole lot of things. And we're doing it to the one, so it ought to be equal for both of them.
Amy, yes?
Aye.
I don't know that we need, just the question is, is the student load based on the DCF calculation for the maximum?
The, okay.
Or is there a possibility to expand it?
Well, no, we wouldn't be able to expand on it. One of the conditions is already that the student capacity is at its max. So it would be limited to seventy-two elementary-age students and forty daycare or preschool students.
Thanks.
Okay.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Was that yes or no?
No.
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbia?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
I'm a no on that.
Pass is four-three.
Motion passed?
Yes, four-three.
Oh, boy, we're moving right along tonight. Pack of lunch.
I know. For dinner.
Now, the consent agenda, I'd recommend that we, since it was, staff recommends this, recommends this, and I would hope that we can go along with our staff. And I'd like to make a motion to approve-
Second.
Second. Any more comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yeah, yes.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Can you restate the motion? The mayor was breaking up when he was talking.
Approve all the consent agendas.
Okay, aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbia?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Very good. Moving along here.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I was wondering, before we jump into bamboo, I know that we have we have our lobbyists from Tallahassee here. They've been waiting for quite a while. I was the person who polled them last time due to the contract. I'm pretty comfortable with what I saw in 2020 due to the crazier we had in 2020. They're only asking for a year, and then we can recontinue discussions to reopen if we want to at that juncture. I'm comfortable with advising staff to move- I'm comfortable with advising staff to, to move in a position of bringing us back a contract next, next meeting. Um, and if they'd like to speak, let them speak and get out of, out of here so they can get back to tally and we can hit this bamboo thing. That would be my recommendation. And if there's anybody else.
I would second it as long as I can call you guys and talk.
Uh, call for vote?
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
To clarify for the public, that takes care of council, the item number fifteen C.
What was that?
Don't worry about it.
Knocking them off.
We now are on to the propositions and presentations.
Carol?
And Ashley.
We have a s- a short presentation for us to, what'd you do, arm wrestling?
Yeah.
If I can't get my way, you know?
That's it.
Anyway, uh, ladies and gentlemen, it's, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening, actually, and, and for many reasons. And, uh, we certainly appreciate our partnership that we have with the council and have had for mi- many, many years now. Uh, we are going to make this very short, but there are some things that we really do need to accomplish uh, that are very important because of timing. Because sixty days from now, we're going to start committee meetings. I know it's hard to believe, not necessarily something that, um, that we can appreciate right now because it is such a fast turnaround this year. That happens every year when we have elec- when we have an off-election year versus an election year. So we will actually, uh, be needing to get everything in order for legislative priorities very quickly. We're here to address any concerns that you might have regards to what's happened. However, I know that you've all received reports. I know that, uh, Ashley specifically had reached out to see if there were any questions or anybody who wanted a personal meeting because we weren't really able to get one done in, in Sunshine. So we would be more than glad to do that. We're still glad to do that. Uh, anytime that you have a question or concern, we're glad to meet with you in person, Zoom, uh, on the phone, wha- whatever. Whatever works for you. We're glad to do that if you have questions. That, it was a very, uh, it was a difficult year. COVID made it even more so because of the fact that the Capitol was pretty much locked down. Not pretty much, it was locked down. If you wanted to meet with a senator, you, or you wanted to listen to a, a meeting in the Senate, you pretty much had to go two blocks away to Tucker Center to be able to do that. Um, so consequently, we were able to make a lot of contacts with our, with our elected delegation that we've known for years. We were able to do that via Zoom sometimes when they were up there or just via telephone. I will tell you that we really, I know that, that Representative Botana, I'm sure is left, but Representative Botana did a really, really, really good job for us as a freshman legislator. So we can't thank him enough because he was there for us. His staff is great to work with. He's great to work with. Uh, and we would never leave out, uh, our good friend, Senator Pasodomo, who's a good friend to many of us. Again, carrying it across the, the line for the three hundred thousand dollars. We're still working on the mechanism there, uh, because the governor has, has assured us that that will happen. So we, we're working with the governor's staff right now. In fact, I've been in contact with them now several times over the last couple of weeks to get actually the, the mechanism that we're going to be using to bring that money down that, that we have appropriated. Uh, I would tell you a couple of quick things, and, and that is that home rule is under attack. You know that. There were something like forty-one bills passed this year that had something negative for, for you, for the cities. And counties too, but cities is what we obviously are focused on. Um, out of those, several of them passed. So, uh, consequently, we have a lot of work again in front of us. When we start looking at our crystal ball, which is what we're asking you to do tonight, to, to look at legislative priorities as we go forward, we're going to say at the time that we're doing that, that you need to understand that if there's anything in that list of forty-one bills that didn't pass, it will be back. It will be back because that's going to continue to chip away. So I don't think that you have a specific bill that we could stand here and really talk about as much as we can talk about the big picture. And to us, the big picture is the attack on home rule. And so we don't, we don't want to lose sight of that. We work very closely with the League of Cities. I know you're very active with the League of Cities. Uh, we have a, a lot of good contacts with those folks too. So we're able to work back and forth with them. I would tell you, I know that, um, uh, that Arlene, uh, in your packet has put out for you the list from last year, the legislative priorities from last year. And if you've had a chance to look at that and have any, uh, opinions about that, comments about that, questions about that, I know I have it here. Um, oh, there it is right there. Um, so if, if you do, uh, what we'd like to do is move on this as quickly as possible. We have the, um, the legislative, the lead delegation meeting coming up August eighteenth. I have already, uh, secured a spot for us on the agenda for that, um, to make sure that we have that spot available. And as soon as we have any written materials together, we can get that to them. Their deadlines for that is August sixth, uh, which is coming up very quickly. Obviously, uh, we can put together the draft and, and hand to them on August sixth, or we can go ahead and move forward with the priorities. Obviously, those things are subject to change at whatever discretion you have and whatever happens this year um, with, with meetings, et cetera. Now, what am I leaving out?
You're not.
Okay. Uh, questions, concerns, comments?
Okay, we're, we're, we put twelve A and fifteen, uh, C together. Is that what we're doing here?
Yes.
Correct. You, you did already handle fifteen C with the vote you had. What we're asking for you right now is, you have the list of last year's legislative priorities. The first, the, the actual, um, positions that you have, number one through nine. We're asking for your, um, your, that you would like to continue that we could submit those again?
We had no success with those or?
Well, can?
One, uh, just for clarification, we would tell you a couple of things. One is that the, the biggest, uh, you know, obviously appropriations are important. It's important to be able to make that happen and bring that money home. We understand all that. We, we also understand that because of what I had just said about the forty-one bills about home rule, one of the more important things that we do is play defense. So we're playing defense on a lot of these things. What you're doing with your legislative priorities for us is much like what you do for your staff. You're saying, these are things that are really important to us. So capital strategies, make sure you're not letting any of these things fall through the cracks without even, without ever getting us alerted or letting us know what's going on. This gives us direction.
Okay, can you explain to me what, what happened with the rental, short-term rentals?
Sure.
It was, it was all over the place. I don't understand.
It was all over the place. The vacation rental, I mean, we-
It didn't pass.
Yeah.
It'll be back. It's, I think it's been, this will be, I think it's five years.
So our-
But Benita does have a grandfather clause.
So far, we've been okay.
So our code enforcement is, hasn't changed? It doesn't need to change?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
Not this time.
No.
I'm sorry, Derek. That's really-
Yeah.
You know, I get used to, I get to, yeah, I get used to playing an attorney and just, you know, yeah, but no.
The second issue we, we need some direction on this evening is, uh-
Okay, now, during COVID, we could not go in and get rental permits. We could not go in the buildings to, to check them out. Can we do that now, Derek? Do you think?
I believe we are doing that now.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I got.
The only, the only thing I-
They did a wonderful job this year.
If you're concerned about code enforcement, the only real change to code enforcement this year in legislature was you can no longer anonymously tattle on your neighbors. Um, we can't respond to code enforcement complaints that are anonymous. They have to, you have to, if you're going to cite, if you're going to call on your neighbors junk-like conditions, you gotta, you gotta leave your name.
Exactly. Uh, it, unless, it, there's-
Unless, unless it's emergency and we, we find that-
I, I notice the state government and the federal governments, everybody's trying to steal everybody else's thunder. Home rule, uh, you know, we got this money from, from Washington DC and it's, oh, you can't, you can't cut your taxes. What? You know, I, I'm going to call him, uh, bu- buy them rather than buy down.
What, what's happening, just so you, uh, know, because following what's happening, this is happening nationwide. It, it's not a Florida issue. It is a national movement by state governments to try and usurp some of the power and authority.
It's happening with the school board too. Because we work with them and th- they're having the same issues.
I, and I don't want to belabor this point because I know everybody's getting tired and you still have a lot of work to do. But I can tell you that some of these bills pop up because in, in your hometown, something happened that you didn't like in your hometown. So as a representative, you take that to Tallahassee and change it for the whole state. That's what's happening, and we've seen that happen. We can take bills that passed or bills that were heard, and we can track it back to the source. Key West is a perfect example because of the cruise lines down there. Tampa had another issue that popped up because of the fact that they raised their, um, impact fees so dramatically one year. They hadn't for a long time, and then they did very dramatically. So the, the representative from there brought that up to Tallahassee.
The vegetable gardens.
The vegetable gardens, you know, whether or not you could grow corn in your front yard. Those are the things that get brought there because they happen locally. And then you have to deal with it, and you deal with it. Sorry, I'm, I'm, I, I've, I've been all the time.
I'm glad you got some enthusiasm.
Anyway.
And then we can move on. We do need direction from council on the list one through nine. Additionally, we need to ensure that we are in line with the council's priorities on funding requests. Um, and Adam and I would like-
I'll make that motion.
Could we, could we do an individual meeting and discuss it or no?
Unfortunately, no. We need these priorities at this meeting. Well, our recommendation would be to continue with the home buyout program at a funding request of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Carol has also and Ashley have been talking with Representative Botana. He has said that if other capital improvement priorities come to fruition as we go through our budget process, other things we'd like the state to partner with us on, we can bring those proposals to him in the future. And he would help support those. But for this-
And Adam's vote on home rule?
Well.
I'd have to look at specific-
I'd have to look at it specifically to answer that.
In general, it's pretty much party line, but I don't want to say his votes are that way. I'd have to look, I'd have to look at specific, to be fair, specific bills.
I, I've moved to support these nine items, continue to, um, have this be as our legislative priorities and to ask for the seven hundred and fifty thousand as Arlene has just articulated as an ask.
I'll second that.
For the buyout pro- program.
Second, I'll, I'll second that.
Additionally, oh, sorry.
Okay. Is there something else we have?
I want to make sure that we will, we will account for that. We ha- we have the documentation to account for a fifty percent match of that. So we'll, we'll be prepared for that.
That's, that's the important part.
Yeah, and we have the documentation for that. And then the second item would be the septic to sewer. It doesn't ask for a funding amount that, that you're basically supportive of departmental programs or other state-funded programs that provide this transfer of septic to sewer.
Okay.
And most, and most of that's going to happen through DEP grants anyway, at this point.
Okay, good. All right, shall we vote? Do we have to?
And then we'll focus on our infrastructure.
Do we need to?
And you, and you can all, and, and, and just for clarification purposes, if things come up, obviously, we're very fluid. We're very, very fluid when we see something pop.
Yeah.
We have to vote or we?
We'll let you know.
Bills, bills are, yeah, bills are being po- bills are being filed right now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve. You had a motion and a second.
Yeah, there we go. So, roll call.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, I see you. Thank you. Good job. Good job.
We'll come and-
You got your work cut out for you now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the action. Thank you so much. My husband will appreciate it.
Okay, are we at thirteen A maybe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, mayor and council member items. Moving along.
Appointment, Mr. Mayor. You, you have one item, the appointment?
We have to do the appointment.
You have the appointment to the outreach committee?
Thirteen. We have two candidates running for the outreach committee. We do, so we have to vote. There's one space open.
We had Angel and then?
So, yep, we have Angel Cerritos and Mike Donelli, um, as the-
Both great guys.
Oh, you got one, I'm sorry.
Mike Donelli?
Mike Donelli, uh, yeah. So I would just say that, um, you know, I'm not going to necessarily pick one or the other, but I will just say that, uh, I, I know they both have a great love for Benita. I will say that Angel Cerritos is the, uh, executive director of the YMCA. Uh, he's probably in his mid-thirties, um, and he deals with, uh, hundreds of Benita Springs families uh, through interaction at the YMCA. So I know he's actively in touch with the people that we're constantly dealing with. So, uh, that's really my only comments on that.
Any other comments?
I do. Um, I went through leadership with Angel and he was my angel. He kept going, Laura, where are you? So you see, mayor, I wasn't behaving then either. But anyway.
You're consistent. You're consistent.
Exactly.
Okay, are we done?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike? Mike, Mike will have to-
Mike, can you, uh?
Verbally tell us your vote.
For Angel? Was that what the recommendation was?
Yeah.
Well, what's your vote? We don't have a-
Oh, for, for Angel.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Is that the Young Man Christian Organization?
Yes, he's head of the YMCA.
YMCA, young man.
He has. He's three beautiful kids.
Okay, well, let's see here. Mister?
Wait, you, you, you told, you fill in your votes and pass it down to the-
Well, seven, seven votes for Angel.
Very good.
Anonymous.
Okay, now I think we got city attorney? You?
We have a motion, motion to approve Angel to be, Angel Soteros to be the member of the Outreach Advisory Committee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
And Donelli, if you're listening, keep applying for different committees.
Yes, absolutely.
Anybody want to recess?
Before bamboo starts?
That's just a move.
No.
I'm going to run before, before bamboo.
Take a ten-minute recess.
Okay.
No.
They called this meeting back in order. Mister Attorney, uh, what's the procedure on this, uh, next item?
On this next item, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is the culmination of the public-private partnership unsolicited proposals. Uh, you, you, just to give a little background, I won't go into the ancient history of the property. I think that's been, that's been well undocumented tonight. Uh, in twenty-twenty, in January, uh, you issued an R, the city issued an RFP looking, uh, in consultation with, uh, our experts, CBRE, uh, to tens of thousands of interested, possibly interested parties. We received only one, uh, real proposal for the site. Um, that did not move forward. It was not i- in the desire of the council at that time. There were discussions to move forward, uh, with another RFP or consider other opportunities. But we also started to receive unsolicited proposals for the properties. Some of those properties, uh, proposals included cash purchases. Others, uh, included proposals to cooperate in development of the property. There were proposals by some of the council members with ideas for the project. Uh, and there was a, uh, proposal of a public-private partnership, uh, mentioned by Baron Collier. Uh, after receiving all of these proposals, if you recall, we, we started discussing and workshopping the idea of what to move forward with. Ultimately, we decided, uh, recently with Mister Tinkler to help us come up with a list of pro- uh, must-haves and must-nots. We then, I then submitted that list to all the proposers who had, had previously submitted. And in accordance with chapter two fifty-five in the Florida Public Part- Private Partnership Statute, which is a statute and process designed where there is a publicly owned asset, but there is a private development. Uh, typically in the sense of a lease in this, in this standpoint, would, you would move forward. And there would be, um, letter of interest and an interim development agreement. And then a process to build it out and, and which would have to show the public benefit and a process for vetting those proposals. Uh, using that statute, I did advertise, uh, in the news press, uh, twice and advertised in the Florida Register. We did receive some inquiries from other, uh, proposers looking for interest in cooperating with us. But ultimately, by the deadline, uh, in order to meet this meeting, we only received four proposals. And that was revised proposals by, uh, Mister Strater on a public park. And that was revised proposals by Mister Strater on a public park, Mister Trask on a cooperative development plan, NOAA Properties, which provided alternates in case we decided to move away from that proposal. Alternate number one would be moving forward with a simple purchase and then following our land development regulations. The second proposal, as they mentioned earlier today, would be to work towards a, a cooperative program for the property. And then Baron Collier took their original proposal and added, identified where they met the criteria and where they, according to our agreed list. So at this point, the next step in the process is for the council to rank the properties according to the criteria you've agreed to. Because we have four of them, and because I, I think we could spend a lot of time on the ranking process, let me go through what I'm going to recommend as how to vote on the items, and then what the next steps would be. From a voting process, I would recommend you, someone make a motion for their, the, the project they felt met the criteria the best. And then once we've dispensed with that, we would move to second and third and fourth, rather than putting ranking sheets and trying to do it that way. I don't know that that would be the, the, the best use of time. After the selection, we would essentially, similar to when we do other rankings with other consultants, we would, we would have a notice of award. But we would be moving towards bringing back another agreement, an interim agreement. So we would exclusively be working forward in negotiations with that top-ranked proposer to come back with an interim agreement, which would define the timetables for the further negotiations to build out each proposal to its complete picture. And so that would be, in any one of these proposals, you know, what are the timelines? What are the contributions? What are the assets that are going to be, what are the, what are the financial terms, essentially? And what is it going to look like? All that would be built out over an interim period. We would also allow them to utilize the property as, give them a license to go onto the property, do any studies, surveys, geotech, that kind of stuff. But the property would still remain the city's. And then after that period, we would have a, a complete agreement, essentially a comprehensive agreement that would be, in the sense of probably a land lease based on the criteria that you've previously identified. And then that would have all the final timetables and the takedown and development of the site. So that would be the process. This is, this is the first step. This is the selection of that first-ranked proposer so that we could move forward, if they feel comfortable moving forward negotiations. We have a negotiation position to start with as well. We move forward to that, come back to you with an interim agreement. That will prob, probably lead to many months under that agreement where we're exclusively working with that proposer to finalize the terms and then bring back a final agreement. Now, I had one member of council ask me how much time this is going to take. And I don't have an answer for you, but, but I'm going to give you a corollary. When someone comes in, a private developer, and I see the magazines here too, they were selected for their food truck. They, they went through this in a, in a very similar manner. They went through the process. We had an interim agreement, we had the LOI. We finalized that agreement, and then they're moving through with their entitlements. That entitlement process is still taking time. It's still, it's several months, you're designing it, you're coming, meet all the codes, you're working through that process. Think of that interim agreement as that same process, except that instead of having one, one party who knows, has their vision, is moving forward, it's two parties. It's the city and the proposer working together. So I can't tell you this is going to be a, a four-month process. It could be a nine-month process. At least three of the proposals discussed the possibility of having workshops and working with the public moving forward. So, I just want to lay all that out so you understand what tonight's vote is about. It's about ranking those proposals, coming up with an order. We move forward the first proposal. If we don't come to an agreement with them, just like when we do, do we do design contracts, we move to the second.
Okay, we're going to go around the horn, Fred?
I, 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 I can go along with that. I think we ought to pick one, and if that one doesn't work, go back and go over again. Forget it.
He's saying to pick, right?
Yeah.
No, that's not what Derek, Derek said, we're going to pick one, and then we're going to rank two, three, four, and I'm saying.
For compliance, for compliance with the statute, I do recommend ranking all of them. And, and I'm going to tell you the reason why. The reason the statute has a ranking process, you, we've had many times, when we have, when we design our parks, we have competitive solicitations where we have many qualified park designers come for, and they, and they give us their proposals. Through this process, through this public-private partnership, we are essentially mirroring that Competitive Negotiation Act. We are, we are having somebody, a proposer, who is being selected to design a public amendment. You know, there's a private element and a public element. So, that ranking criteria is the reason I want, I would like to follow that process. That way, we have the full scope of the statute to, to envelop the project and allow it to move forward. We don't have to add anything additional at a later time.
Okay, Fred, you're on deck. Now, do you want us to?
Rank them.
What I would, what I would request, unless there is any reason the council wishes to discuss or do anything else, my recommendation would be make a motion on the person, on one, and then move to the next one, and so on.
Mister Mayor, I'd make a motion. I was going to say, I'd make a motion that we accept Baron Collier's proposal.
Second.
Second.
We have three seconds, four, sorry.
Yes, yes, Chris.
I want to make sure I understand what it is that we're voting for. What we're basically doing is outsourcing city planning.
To a great degree, correct.
Because we're not to a point where we can enter into an agreement for the actual construction of any type of facility along the, the river of the bamboo property. So, it's sort of a strange process, in my view. You know, where, where I've been involved with other cities in planning these kinds of projects, you typically, the city hires a consultant to help them through the city planning process. That means, you know, working with council, creating a vision, reducing that vision to, in simple terms, architectural plans, building a model that sits in City Hall, showing the roads, the parks, the, the buildings, and so forth. And once that's agreed to, then putting that out for a proposal. Now, I'm sure that, that, you know, this is what's being worked here tonight is not necessarily totally foreign. But I, I do wish that the council understands that what we are doing is we're outsourcing a city planning function involving public property. And if that's what the council chooses to do, well, that's fine. But in effect, you're contracting with NOAA or Charlie Strater or Trask or Baron Collier to do your planning for you when you know on the back end, except with maybe perhaps Charlie, that same person is going to build it. So, if you're comfortable with that, then fine. If you're not comfortable with it, fine. But be aware that you, this is, in effect, it's, it's city of 62,000 people. It's not yet acting like a big city or substantive city, outsourcing their planning function.
Uh, Mike, what do you got to say here?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with Baron Collier. I'm choosing them as my number one.
Okay.
Should he list his?
No, I, I think we, we have a motion in a second on Baron Collier. I just wanted to, to help clarify, and I think that everything that Councilman Corey has said is, is accurate, but I want to give an example that maybe everyone get their heads wrapped around. The concept here would be similar to a city who wants to build a sports arena. The city could go out on city property and design, and hire consultants to design a sports arena. Then they could build the sports arena, then they can hire teams to run the sports arena, either internal or outs, outside. Or they could do, enter into some form of public-private partnership where an outside group comes in, agrees to take over city-owned property, to manage it, to build it, design it, do the whole works, take on the risks associated, and then pay back the city any lease revenues. But essentially, take all the steps and, and bring them down into one. A very similar project happened downtown Fort Myers. You know, they had the old event center. The, the city of Fort Myers needed to renovate that. That became part of the complex, the new hotel. But that was given over to the management with the hotel. In these types of projects, there is always a private element and a public benefit. The requirement is that the project has to qualify, and it has to be publicly.
Hang on, Fred.
It has to qualify and has to be publicly owned. In this situation, what has been proposed, and I'll give the example of Baron Collier, that is, it is a land lease. The entire project is, is continued to be owned by the city. It would be a long-term land lease, the terms of which we work out. There would be recreational and cultural elements, and the other public service would be the benefit to the redevelopment of downtown. All of those qualify under the statute as qualifying benefit projects. So, that would be the, that's, that's the recommendation I made after the workshop, that that's a process we utilize. It gives us a framework to move forward. We could have easily just done this as an RFP as well. But this is just putting it into a framework that, that, that can be followed and that creates some surety for the city and for, for the proposers that there's, there's a process to get from point A to point B.
Baron Collier is willing to negotiate what they build on this, on our property?
They're, they're, they've, they have a proposal. That proposal is in the preliminary stages. We are going to work through all those details. There are elements that.
Wanted more park, or less park, or?
Correct.
This or that. I mean, it's, it's, we're just picking somebody to negotiate, and there's only one.
And can I say this, Derek? I think, I think it'll help people at home maybe if you, to understand this. Think of like a general contractor as opposed to a, a regular contractor when you're doing something at the house. So when we did City Hall, when we did the revamp, we had a company that hired and dealt with everything for us, so we didn't have to do that. So we got rid of that functionality under the general contractor, who then hires all the regular contractors, all the subs, and they handle the entire project. That's kind of what we're doing here.
We're doing.
And we have Nick Cas, well, I'm sorry, Fred.
No, no, we're, there's two more things that we are outsourcing that are really more important than everything Derek said. The big thing they're going to do is they're going to get to see if they can get tenants that are willing to put their name on a lease to move into a place that's built to their specs and their needs. That wasn't mentioned. And the second thing is, which is also important, because the most difficult thing to finance today is commercial. They've got the horsepower to do it, to get the money. So all that, put together with what Derek said, is what they're really, we would be outsourcing.
Right.
Yeah.
Amy, okay.
Well, I'm in favor of Baron Collier. But when we get past the, when we start this negotiation, I, there are a couple of nuances to it that I think I discussed already with Derek, and that's a much more robust interaction with the public and, and also with us, you know, the council. And I, and I think we've gotten a lot of really good ideas from, for specific kinds of projects or, or, or things that we might have down there that I think the, the staff and the council have to be engaged with because it's, we, we need to enlarge our, I think what, what came out of this was that we have an incredible, we don't just have the bamboo property resource. We have the entire resource down there for, for all our parks. And we also have some ideas about what we had expressed as council people to do like for the Library Plaza. So I think when we talk to them, it has to be in the context of what we're planning or hope to do in those broader areas within the downtown area. And I do think that we should try to at least think about incorporating some of the proposals that, the ideas that came out from this process that we've been through. So somehow, I want that incorporated when we go forward. And that's what I think of as a private-public partnership, that we have some influence about the direction. And even the, the discussion of how much should be in green space, that, I think, should be something that we have more input in. And I think it's, I think it's going to fall out because I think the flood plan is probably 40% of it anyway, so no one's going to build there. But that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Don't, he's sitting in the room, don't tell him that.
Well, he, he's going to find it out for himself. I'm sure he's going to know where the line is, you know? But I, I eyeballed it, and that's what I thought it was.
Okay, now, I've got a couple of requests at the moment for Baron Collier. You have elevators in these buildings because you got old population. And I, I've lived in a building who's, and carry on groceries, and it's not, it's not, it's not livable. Not here, if we can build an elevator.
Mister Mayor, I just.
Do we call for a vote?
Yeah, well, we, we, yeah, I, I think we're right at the point of calling for a vote. I, I wouldn't want to get too bogged down in detail that we'll work out later. But I would just say, real quickly, since Mister Castle Agüita is here for Baron Collier, I just want to make sure he understands what the council's thought pattern is on this and agrees to that before you pick them as number one. Otherwise, you might as well move on to your next pick.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight and waiting for us to get through.
Thank you for having us. It was interesting listening to all the speakers, that, you know, we were paying attention, and, and some of the folks came up to us and expressed concern about what we would do. And, you know, it's hard to, to build trust with someone. We're going to spend a lot of time with each and every one of you. We've heard what you've said. I think, you know, every couple of weeks, meet you one for coffee, show us some of the versions. And we agree to do that, work with your staff and work with the community. We'll have some public, you know, meetings with them, but it's going to be a process. Our goal is to, to bring something forward that at the end of the day that you can all look right in our eyes and say, wow, they really spent the time with us. They, they showed us what works, what doesn't work, why it doesn't work, what would be positive. And then, you know, work with the folks in the neighborhood and understand that. Those businesses will thrive more if we include them in some of the discussions. Some of the people that are doing work in the area express concern about, well, will we control the whole space? No, the whole goal of this is to have the city control the space, really design things that they can be proud of and, and participate in. So, you have our promise as a developer, our reputation means a lot to us. You may get sick of meeting with us because we're going to kind of be in your offices quite a bit to talk to you about the project that's going forward. But we're willing to do that if we get selected. And, and, you know, after that period's over, as, as your city attorney pointed out, there is an interim step where you start to refine it, and then you bring back a final agreement. At that point in time, everything will be laid out in pretty much detail, so.
And as a lease.
Yeah, listen to the details.
As a lease, we will have an income flow eventually.
Yes, sir, that's, that's part of the proposal.
We have nothing now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you get a vote?
Yeah, roll call?
It's Chris, I thought Chris.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we have any other comments on, on?
We have no idea, we're not looking at the list.
Just one.
I'm not looking at this list, this is irrelevant today.
Just one comment. Had a conversation with Martha Simons today, and she reminded me that 15 years or so ago, there was developed a comprehensive land plan for Old Downtown. And it was designed to, it, it covered from Rosemary to Benita Beach Road. And it was divided up into pods or strips or blocks and so forth. But to, just to echo on what Amy said, you know, our, our ancestors on this council came to the same conclusion 15 years ago that we do need to take into account everything that is downtown. I know the Downtown Alliance has the same boundaries from Rosemary to Benita Beach Road, and we do have that old comprehensive plan. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor. Mister Attorney?
I'm not coming to the next meeting, you guys.
We have to go.
You gotta run for office. Go ahead.
Got to move first.
Go ahead, roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Unbelievable.
At this, at this time, I'd, I'd ask, I, I would seek a motion for the second-ranked proposal.
I'll make a motion for NOAA Properties to be the developer.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'd go with say.
I'd go with, I'd go with Charlie. I'd go with Charlie.
Can I, can I make a question, or ask a question? Can we come back at the next meeting where we have somebody vet the financial capability of these guys, the other ones getting financed?
But that, that's really part of the next step after, after going forward. These are all preliminary proposals.
But if we, if we rank somebody number two, and they're not financially able to finance.
Then, then we'll move to number three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Collier's gonna-
Now, second to motion.
Okay, so we got, we got a motion and a second for Noah Properties? Councilman Purdon?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Corey?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
No.
Okay, that's one more.
Do we have another recommendation for number two?
I'll throw Charlie Strater out for number two.
Is there a second? Go ahead Debbie. Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Who was it for number two now?
Charlie.
Charlie Strater.
Who has to then prove that they have the finances in the second step, right?
If it gets them.
Isn't that?
If it gets them.
Let's, let's finish the, the vote.
Who's, uh, who's up?
Charlie wants to speak.
No, uh, Mike. You wanna vote?
No, I, 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 so are, are we voting for number two or are we, are we voting for who has?
Number two.
Okay, uh, well, Noah was my number two. Um, so we're, we're voting for Charlie to be number two now?
At this moment, yeah, correct.
Uh, no.
Councilman Forbes? Um, hm, no. Councilwoman Caramba?
No.
Councilman Purdon?
Yes.
What is the vote?
Four, three.
Okay, four, three in favor?
Bills.
Okay. Do we have, do we have another proposal?
I propose Shay Trask for number two.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Uh, aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Pass is five, two.
Okay, we got two.
Okay, we only got two left, we're gonna get there.
God, we are.
Do we have a motion on, on the third ranked? Actually, we only have one more.
I'll second.
Okay, Charlie Strater, roll call. Councilman Gibson?
For second or third?
Third.
What are we on?
Third, sorry Mike.
No.
Yeah, I don't know, this is-
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Who will we vote, I'm sorry.
Charlie for three.
For three. No.
Councilman Purdon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Bills, four, three?
Oh gosh. We only have two, right?
This is the game that never ends.
We, we can, we can, we can stop at two.
Motion, we go in alphabetical order?
The devil's in the details.
Here, here's the issue, you guys, you guys do this all the time. You don't remember that you do it, but you, you do actually do this on a fairly regular basis.
You read.
Ranked and based in number.
The problem, the problem I have with, with the choice is not, I mean, I, I think we should at least have someone that could financially carry forth with this. That's the problem that I have.
Me too.
Um, not that their proposals are, are, are bad, that's not it.
At all, yeah, I agree.
Uh, Mr. Attorney? Is Baron Collier the only one offering to lease the property?
Correct.
Everybody else just wants to give us money and take over the property.
No, on, on, only one of the proposals by Noah Properties was to acquire the property. The remainders were all variations of working with us. So, I did not, I did not feel is the council's desire to reject proposals that came in if they did meet the criteria. I felt that that was your determination to make. What I, what I would recommend is that we just need one more for third and we'll know who fourth is.
Okay.
Well, but by definition, you're calling somebody last. You said we could get by with two left.
I, I, I'm, I'm trying to get to a place where we can get to all four for, for compliance, but-
Did I make a motion that we go in alphabetical order for the last two? If somebody seconds that, we can-
Noah Strater?
What's that mean?
Yeah, it means we would go alphabetical order with the last two. No one should.
You know who they are.
So, go Noah should, yeah.
Should it come to that point where we would reach either one of them? Could we just quit or would we have to negotiate with them?
No, we could quit.
No, we can quit, but, but that, by that point, you've, you've, we've had long discussions with at least two of them.
Okay.
Conditions may have changed, that may be two years from now.
Alright, that's fine, just a-
And, and if Baron Collier, devil's in the details, if it's, doesn't work for us, then we don't have to go with them either.
Correct. This is not, there's not obligation. When you, when you, when you do proposals or you seek proposals for qualified engineering firms or anything else, you're not obligated to, to contract with any of them. What you're, what you're doing is ranking the order in negotiations.
I agree with Jesse, let's do it in that order. We'll do it both together, Noah and then Strater.
There's a motion and a second. Councilman Forbes?
Noah then Shay.
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Strater.
Oh, Strater, I'm sorry. Yeah, Shay missed you.
You don't even know your own.
Uh, aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Sure.
Mayor Steinmeier?
You really got me confused now.
I know, just say yes, 'cause it's gonna be bad.
Third would be Noah Properties, fourth would, fourth would be Charlie Strater.
I thought Noah was already second.
No, Shay Trask is second.
Yeah.
So, we got Baron Collier number one?
Yes.
Who's number two?
Shay Trask.
So, it goes Collier, Shay, Noah, Strater.
That would be the, that would be the final slate.
Collier, Shay, Noah, Strater in that order.
Okay, yes, 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 yes.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
So, just to confirm, it's Baron Collier, Shay Trask, Noah, and then Charlie Strater?
Correct.
Aye.
Okay, City Attorney, are we done with this now?
You are.
Can we go home?
No, I have, I have more items for you too.
But everybody else can leave.
I volunteered for this job, I don't know about anybody else.
Uh, I have two other, other issues that I wanna bring to the, uh, council's attention. We've received two lawsuits since the last meeting. Um, the, the first is from Cosway Commerce, uh, down at Old Forty-One and, um, Benita Beach Road. It's a dispute relating to representations regarding staff and leases and as well as impact fee credits. Um, that one is being handled, um, by David Theriak. The other lawsuit is from, uh, Mary Schloss. You may have all received letters over the last couple of months from, from a lady off of Corzine Road who was concerned about neighboring property. She's filed a lawsuit against her neighbors and included the city in that one. Uh, I am handling that litigation. Uh, I have also been, uh, made aware that we should be expecting a, a suit from the Safira lawsuit as, uh, for Safira Project, which was denied by the council. Uh, this is the land use project in the DRGR, just for, just for your own reference in case you have any communications with any of the representatives of that.
That's the one who brought the stenographer?
Yes.
Shocker, okay.
So, that's it, I just wanna give you the, the notice on that. I'll, I'll send you the cases and we'll, we'll set up, um, we'll set up executive sessions as necessary to discuss any actual strategies.
Thank you. Gonna keep you working now. Keep your negotiation. Okay, do we got the city manager maybe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, Arlene?
Lisa to come forward.
Can you come closer to the mic or?
Thank you, I'd like Lisa to come forward. She's gonna go over very briefly what we're required to do this evening for, for our regulations with the state on the trim notice.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Lisa Robertson, uh, Finance Director for the record. Today, we are required to take the first of three millage rate votes. That will be the tax that's applied to real estate in Benita Springs next fiscal year. At the last meeting, council was presented a balanced budget. And in that balanced budget, it include, included the prior year millage rate as the proposed current year millage rate. Um, in your green sheet, you have, um, various millage rates laid out with respect to the vote that you need for those. Today should be the maximum millage rate that you want to assess. Because going forward, we have three more, three votes, tonight and then two more. But going forward, you can go down, but you cannot go up. So, tonight should be whatever you wish to be, the maximum, knowing that you can go down at the next two meetings if you so choose.
Okay, I make a motion we go to point eight oh, which would, uh, at the current rate, uh, from what Lisa's told me, we get, the taxpayers would be paying, uh, five hundred fifty thousand dollars more next year than they are this year. The rollback rate is what, point seven eight? Uh, I'm proposing, uh, uh, point eight zero zero, which would, uh, s- save the taxpayers two hundred thousand dollars, which I figured it could buy everybody a Happy Meal at McDonald's. And I think we can afford that and, and that's my motion.
A friendly amendment potentially? Would you consider, uh, the full rollback rate?
The rollback?
Yeah, would you consider the full MO?
Yeah.
I would, I would support it under those circumstances.
We can do that tomorrow or, you know? Do I get a second on the eight?
I second you, on the, um, on the, um, on a, on a, on a full rollback, I'll, I'll second, which is a little-
Can I make a point?
Yeah, Mike's getting confused too.
The mayor, the mayor has recommended point eight mils. The rollback rate is point seven eight eight zero, correct?
Wait, wait, wait.
So, Jesse, are, what you're asking for is you're seconding a rate of, of point seven eight eight zero?
No, 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 no. I had the motion of point eight.
I, I understand that, but-
And then Jesse said-
Councilman Purdon requested a, an, an amendment to point, to the rollback rate. I just wanna be clear on that.
So, we're actually cutting taxes more?
Are you accepting the amendment to the rollback? He's asked you if you'd accept an amendment to bring it to the rollback rate instead of-
At this meeting, at this meeting, not, not necessarily at future meetings.
But you said we can never go back up, we have-
You can only go down.
Can only go down.
Okay, so I say stay the same.
Is there any point to pushing these buttons if we don't get called upon?
No, because he's ignoring them.
We're going around the horn.
So, why do we have these things?
I don't know.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor, I've turned, uh, uh, you know, if you wanna say Mr. Mayor or Rick, I, I can hear and, and I can respond.
Well, I just wanna be sure what I'm supposed to do to get attention.
Exactly.
Go ahead.
This is not a debate.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm synthetic to a rollback, but I think, why don't we wait to do it at the last point? Because if anything came up, some catastrophe, we can't go back up. I'm not opposed to a rollback. I'll vote for it, but I'd, I'd prefer to wait and do it the very last minute because you don't know what could happen between now and then.
The difference, the difference is, uh, five hundred fifty thousand dollars.
No, no, you're gonna, I'm, I'm gonna vote for you. I just would prefer we wait to the last minute.
How about voting for the eight, point eight?
No, I'm saying I'm-
And that's, and that's only two hundred thousand.
I, no, I'm, I'm, I, I'll vote for that.
Why keep people on the edge?
Because something bad might happen in the next-
And for three hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna bankrupt the company?
You don't, you don't know.
Mayor, I would like to speak, please. May I speak?
You didn't push it back?
I, well, I took it off because no one, I, I, I was ignored.
You know, yes, you may speak when I'm done speaking with Fred.
But I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, but-
Go ahead, speak.
May I make a comment, please? First of all, is inappropriate for you and any other councilman to have a conversation here. They could speak and then somebody else has to speak. That's what we decided was Robert's rules.
Robert's not here.
We follow.
That is part of our charter. Now, please, I agree with Fred that the proceed, proper and appropriate and, and reasonable procedure is to maintain the millage rate at the current rate until we have gone through the budgetary process to see if there's any needs that we have not uncovered yet. We could always make another, um, reduction. This is just the maximum. And that in the long run, I think we can spend the time during the budgetary process to make sure that both our expenditures and our revenues make sense.
May I speak now?
Yes, the mayor.
No.
I'd like to speak.
I'm sorry, but aren't, may I have a clarification on procedure here?
Right now, we have a motion. And it's, we were in the clarification stages whether there was a second. There does not appear to be a second. So, the motion would-
The motion's for rollback rate, Jesse?
I said the point seven eight eight, but-
I second that.
Okay. We can have discussion on that or you can vote?
No, no, what the motion is.
Point, to set the, for, for the purposes of the truth and millage, for the notices that go out, to set the millage at the rollback rate of seven, point seven eight eight oh. What that means is that everyone who, all the residents of City Benita Springs will get the little flyer saying this is your taxes this year, this is the proposed. And, and, and you can't go above that. So, that'll, you'll be going to that rate. You can lower it at your final meeting in September, but you won't be able to raise it.
May I speak?
There's a motion and a second.
And my comment would be, we have a chance to lower it two more, it's two separate meetings. And I agree with Amy that we leave it the same until, and Fred, who points out that we, oh, and Chris, I'm sorry, who point out that, like, you know, shit could hit the fan. And we wanna have, oh, oh, uh, you know, stuff could hit the fan. And we might need extra money, so.
Okay, so reading the tea leaves, I can, I can withdraw the motion and we can continue it, I suppose. I mean, I probably know where I'm gonna be, assuming nothing else comes up, but apparently the support is not here, so I'm good with, uh, having the discussion again later. So, I'll rescind the second and we can keep moving.
I move that we maintain, uh, the current rate of point eight one seven three.
I'll second.
Real calm.
Any additional discussion?
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
For now, aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
For now, aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
For now, aye.
Well, okay, taxpayers, you, you're unhooked. These people won't lower your taxes, because they might need it. They got eight, they got millions of dollars, but they won't give you two hundred thousand dollars for a Happy Meal.
Misrepresentation, I'm sorry, point of order, misrepresentation. We have two more times that we will discuss this.
Well, they, they did not drop them tonight.
Not tonight, but it's not a definitive.
That's just a statement. They did not drop the rate tonight.
No, you said taxpayers are gonna be paying more.
I think, I.
Anyway, move on, move on.
Point of order, I think it was recognized.
Point of order.
Yes.
Is that, is there another point of order, or are we?
No, move on.
The next item that we have before you this evening is that, uh, the Ninety-Fifth Annual Florida League of Cities Conference is coming, and we are required to fill out a resolution appointing your, uh, voting delegate. Currently, the state liaisons to the Florida League of Cities are Councilmember Jesse Purdon and Councilmember Mike Gibson. Additionally, Councilmember Forbes is your liaison, is your local Southwest Florida chapter representative. Um, you are able to designate, the previous times we've designated a, a voting delegate and then an alternate, but it's completely up to the, the council how you'd like to move forward. And you do need to be in attendance at the conference.
So do we know who's going? Are they going?
I, I plan on going, and I, I believe Councilman Gibson is going as well.
I move that Deputy Mayor, uh, Mike Gibson would be our voting, and Jesse would be our second. Is he holding a second or? Alternate? Alternate, alternate, right.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye. You're muted, I think.
Yeah.
You're muted.
But you vote for yourself.
Coma.
Like, you are muted.
I read his lips.
Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Oh, sorry, aye, I forgot I was on mute.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
I, I do have one other thing to bring to your attention this evening. Um, over the weekend, um, former Councilman David Piper had reached out to the mayor, reached out to myself as well. Um, we did state at the previous council meeting, we would have an appraisal, hopefully, or some more information about the parcel off of South Riverside Drive at this meeting. Unfortunately, the appraisal has not come in. We anticipate it possibly by the end of the week or next week. I have assured Mr. Piper that we were going to forward the appraisal out to all of council as soon as it was available, and that the mayor would wish to have an item before the council at our very next meeting with a contract for sale. Uh, I believe Mr. Piper was, would like to see some assurances that that would be the direction we can move forward. The other parcels that he had, he's, he has already secured contracts on.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Just for discussion, is there any further that we can go on this today? Because I mean, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think it's a good deal. I mean, but i- if you want us to wait, we can wait.
Excuse me, Jesse, but I think we need, uh, appraisal, legally, we have to have the appraisal.
What I will do is, I will show this, I will express what happened this evening to Mr. Piper, so he's assured that there was, um, direction from council to bring back a contract for sale. And that we'll work with, uh, with the city attorney and have everything prepped and signatures ready for your approval on the fourth.
Okay.
Good.
And I did need to let the public know that is Lee County Parks and Rec is going to be waiving parking fees at our beach parks this weekend, um, in recognition of National Parks and Recreation Week. We'll put that information on our social media and websites as well.
Oh, yay.
And, and that's also county-wide.
Can we go to Bearford Beach too?
No.
Lee County, oh, that's Collier County, Collier County.
Not really.
Thank you.
Put a whole weekend on Lee County.
Maybe Chris can get us passes for Benita Bay.
Okay.
That's it, Mayor, Mayor, uh, bragging guys.
No, I'm glad to meet you.
So we're not talking about the budget?
Well, we're, we're gonna have several items for you on the fourth, August fourth, for the budget. We've, we're concerned that in the length of this meeting and the items you had to get through, there's more discussion that has to happen on those items, so we'll have a lot, and we'll also have more information to, updates of information of revenues for you at that meeting too.
Well, I, I will give you one thing.
Yeah, yeah.
At the, um.
Mayor and council members before, go ahead.
Yeah, at the, um, policy committee meeting that I attended in Orlando this last week, uh, and almost all the cities of Florida are, remember that. The number one priority that they have is to, uh, see if they can get an amendment to this tree law that got passed. But secondly, the big push.
I'm sorry?
Tree law.
The tree law that got passed.
Uh huh, uh huh, uh huh.
An amendment to it, to make it a little bit more workable. But the big, the other big thing is that they had a expert in, his name was Mr. Marshall, that the chairman, or the liaison for Florida League brought in. And he explained the way things are, that this year, there will not har, it'll be very difficult to ask for money from the legislative station for water quality, because of the fact that they've put this money forward for, because the septic tanks and all that are the number one priority. Bitch fi clay pipe is in, in that, so the whole state thinks this is real important. Uh, the second thing, though, that they mentioned was that water quantity requests could be honored, but they said it was more for, because I asked the question, I said, water quantity means two things. It couldn't be. One is flood mitigation and flooding, or it can mean the availability of cheap water that you and I call potable water, or drinking water, or whatever. And this expert said, no, that's, that's what this year's definition of water quantity is. It isn't flood mitigation. It's alternate sources of water, because there's different places in the state. We're all running into one problem, and that is that the sea is creeping in, and it's contaminating the aquifers we have that we get our drinking water out. It gets worse every year, and it's a combination of a whole lot of things that go on, but it's, it's happening. So at some point, we'll probably be doing like they do in the Middle East and making drinking water out of seawater, I suppose. But anyway, that's, I wanted to share that with you. And that, that's, that was endorsed and supported also by the whole committee, so.
Thanks, Fred. Uh, Mike, you got any comments for?
Uh, no, I'm good, thanks.
Hey, you need to update your photo.
Yeah, I like your beard. Okay, uh.
Nope, I'm fine.
Jesse, you're done? Amy, or like, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Lower, please.
Thank you, sir. No, I'm good, thank you.
I'll.
Jesse is.
Yes, sir. I'll be real quick. Uh, number one, August tenth, six to eight, we're gonna be redoing the Watertown Hall. So we have Colonel Kelly, who runs Army Corps Engineers for Florida, will be on the panel. Congressman Byron Donalds will be on the panel. Uh, we have, uh, South Florida Water Management District Chair, uh, Chauncey Goss, and Adam Gelder, who runs the, um, he's the person from Department of Interior who runs all of the, uh, SERP projects, so all the Florida Everglades-related projects. He's kind of the point person between the state and the fed side. So it's a really good panel. Um, August tenth, six to eight, note the date, we, we're also going, yeah. It's gonna be at Cape Coral City Hall. It, press release hasn't gone out, so you guys are learning right now, along with the citizens. Um, but note that that's also the first day of our thing in, in Orlando. So I'm, it's a long night, it's six to eight, I'm driving up after, but just know in your head, it's the same day. Um, and then number two, I was able to talk to Commissioner Sandelli about the billboard. Um, he's in the process of getting the contract from, uh, the county, so we can kind of see what we're looking at. And just a reminder for anyone who's listening, the billboard on Imperial and Forty-One, that I've been, I've been complaining about, um, it's owned by the county, he's getting the contract, so we can see what, what it's worth, and then hypothetically see what options we might have for, for moving or removing that sign. And then last, I would say, for, from the design side of that, uh, we have money put aside already for design. Uh, and I was wondering if you guys would be okay with us having, uh, our design folks look at what a, uh, the potential of a wrought iron gate or something around the gravesite might be. So now we can be working on two, two components of making the city look better when you drive in. So on, on one hand, I'm trying to get rid of the billboard through the county, but on the second hand, even if that doesn't work, we're gonna put, uh, a nice potential, whether it's a natural buffer or, or a wrought iron gate, kind of around the gravestone, so you're not driving through. I mean, if you go right now and you drive through, look right across, uh, from Southwest Florida Performing Arts Theater, you have, like, target bags that are hanging on the gate, or that are hanging on it. See, if people who get off on one sixteen, they drive through, they see that tacky billboard, and then they see, uh, that bag hanging on the gate. That's not a great representation of us as a city. Uh, we have the money already set aside, so if you all would indulge me, I'd like to see what our design folks could do in regards to what we might be able to do out there.
We put a landscaper in that?
That's what, well, that's what they'll do. They'll come back and they'll say, hey, you should put up a fence, or you should put up landscape, you should just put bushes, but we have money aside already, so we could just have somebody look at what it would look like.
You have funds with it.
I'm interested in the billboard.
Yeah, I would like to, okay, so the deal with the billboard is the county owns the billboard, and they're in a contract with Lenar, is it Lenar? And so right now, what we're doing is we're having Commissioner Sandelli pull the contract to see what it's worth annually, or whether it's a ten-year or a one-year, and, and what that actually costs. And then essentially meet with them, and then see what it would take to either get it down, or for them to get an alternate location, uh, so that we could clear that out of there, so.
So to clarify what Councilman Purdon is asking, is that you allow staff to work with the city architect to start drafting some ideas, and some cost proposals that he would bring back for you all to review for a future CIP?
Mm-hmm.
So if you guys would agree, do we need to vote on that?
I think I see direction that we should, that staff should do that.
I think it'll just make our whole city look a lot better, and it won't cost us a ton of money, so let's just see what we can do. All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
I prefer to have the billboard down, but as an alternative, we could look at, it's, that's the one that's really low or something, because they, we did something weird about the development. We could alternatively just raise it up to a norm, quote, "normal" height, and it, it would improve it, but I really would like to have it down. But that could be a secondary thing.
And the good thing is, we own, we have properties that they might potentially be interested in, that we already own, so.
Um, I just have two quick, uh, just to follow up on the water, um, task force or, uh, town hall. I did send, draft a letter to Congressman Byron Donalds, and I know you all got the same letter that I got, but I thought that letter was really exceptionally well-done in, in regard to its specificity of what he was saying. And he presented the case, our case, uh, so clearly to the Army Corps of Engineers. I know that they voted to do the CC, uh, choice there, but I think there, from what I read in the papers, and maybe, uh, Jesse could, uh, inform us a little bit better the next time, that there is a possibility that it will be some adjustments that closer, closer to what had been suggested by the people in Southwest Florida. But I so appreciate his effort, and, um, and I wanted to make a personal outreach to him. Uh, and I don't know if anybody else, or if we wanted to do one from the council or whatever, but I did it personally.
Yes. And we'll see him on the.
On the twenty-sixth. Well, uh, uh, you'll, you'll see him on the tenth, but on the twenty-sixth of this month, we're meeting with the Colonel about that.
But I, I think he did, he really did a great job, so I appreciated it. And, and just, and I just want to tell you that I did, uh, today, finally got, uh, Arlene's, uh, performance evaluation to her. But the reason I bring it up is because I had used the method that I had pursued, uh, preferred, which was to go down the objectives and to see what progress we've made in some of those, uh, specific projects that are listed on the, on the material that she sent us. And as I was doing that, I thought, well, you know, these need to be updated. They're not up, some of them are untimely now, so I, I just wondered if the council, after they looked at those lists, those objectives, if they would, uh, be interested in my help, uh, talking to staff and asking if they could help us to just update it. I, I think that the, the broad objectives will be the same, we still want to do this, but it's the specifics under them that I think could use some updating, so that was just my thought.
We're gonna incorporate that also into the budget discussions as well, because we do want some insight. That's how we formulate how the budget moves forward with funding those priorities, so we, we do annually ask you to look at those, so we're gonna be bringing that as part of the schedule.
And I think we might need some specific projects on cer- certain ones of them. We have changed, we, we're doing a lot of things there, but it doesn't, it isn't reflected in our formal list, so I think they should be improved. And that was just because of what I went through today when I was looking at it in a very specific way. Um, and, and that's it.
Thank you, Amy.
Okay. What's the mayor got for us? Oh, I think we covered everything tonight. I'm, I'm excited that Baron Collier, uh, is gonna work with us. We could have more green space, more park, more this or that, whatever. We're gonna work through this. After eighteen years, we might ask some income off of that property. Hey, can we approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comments, roll call?
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Yes, uh, public comment? You gotta have somebody, you gotta say something.
Now, we have a sheriff officer in the back who's gonna expel anybody out who left.
These gentlemen are here all night, they don't even have a tie on, my goodness. They must be professionals. Yes, sir, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, thank you. Uh, my name is Jim Lamb, I'm part of the executive team with Summit Broadband. I'm here with my colleague tonight and fellow executive team member, uh, Randall Covert. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I know it's been a long evening for everybody, so I'll make my comments brief. Um, we really just wanted to come tonight and share with you a little bit about Summit Broadband, and also express our interest in potentially partnering with the city of Benita Springs, um, on any broadband initiatives that you have, as you continue to try to improve the community and attract more residents and businesses, um, to Benita. Uh, for those of you, you don't know, Summit Broadband is a locally-based fiber, locally-based fiber-focused company. Uh, we actually serve many markets throughout Florida, including Benita Springs and greater Southwest Florida. Um, we have over fifty employees in Lee County, and we actually, our regional headquarters are here in Benita. My office is just down the street. And, um, we serve thousands of Benita residents and businesses with our hundred percent wholly-owned and operated fiber network. Backed by our, um, ownership group, Brain Management, we are making significant capital investments across the state, um, with the goal to improve access to technology and help bridge the digital divide. Along those lines, we have a great deal of experience and success in partnering with local government entities. Uh, we've recently entered into various forms of, of agreements and partnerships with other municipalities throughout the state. Um, you may be aware that we were recently awarded, um, or selected by Lee County's public school system to build and, um, provide internet access to all ninety-eight locations throughout the school district. Um, this network's gonna enable our students to really leverage technology and access that technology on a reliable, future-proof, uh, fiber-based network. We've also established a partnership with the city of Cape Coral that continues to grow and evolve as they look to access federal funding to address underserved areas of the Cape. In addition, we recently entered into a public-private partnership with the city of Lakeland. Uh, this was a highly competitive RFP process. Ultimately, Summit Broadband was selected over many other companies like CenturyLink and Hotwire, among others, um, through a unanimous decision by the city of Lakeland, uh, council. Feedback on why we were selected included our experience, our expertise in designing, deploying, and operating, um, custom-built networks, our local ties to the community, and knowledge on how to access available funding. Uh, these are just a few examples, uh, where Summit's partnering with government entities to improve the quality of life and bridge the digital divide. Um, we're currently in ongoing discussions with others, and would welcome the opportunity to have similar discussions with the city of Benita Springs. Um, if it's agreeable to, uh, to you, we'd like to start reaching out to the council members and staff over the coming days, uh, but we'd also welcome any direction you may have for us in how to initialize or initiate those conversations, so thank you for your time.
What's the name of your company again?
Summit Broadband.
Summit.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Go home, adjourned.